It's still warm. A little cold.
Got into Jane's car and the thing said it's 70 and it's like, feels warm in here. Change that.
That's very funny. I was afraid to turn on the air conditioner because it's too hot out of town. Just my luck.
I had a mine yesterday. Took the cover off of it so it was like time.
I don't, I don't. Yeah, we got two units too.
I have after I had replaced the capacitor in the thing twice. Because it got water in it and it sat on it and froze it. Because of the way that unit that I had at that point was designed. So now I have a much bigger one because we went to a different size setup. And he told me this is just wrap the thing up. You buy one of the cheap covers, put it on it, and then every spring make sure you take it out, clean it out, make sure there's nothing in there. There was no nest built or anything. My sister.
The front wheel just fell right off.
Oh, that's scary.
Oh, my gosh. She's adorable.
And then. Looks just like Mary.
What the?
They're very, very close. It's one of the.
My kids' wheel is busted and there's nowhere in town.
On our front door. Three little robin eggs already. Took her two days to lay them all.
All five of mine hatched. So now you have my little babies.
Oh, there's a fight.
Yeah.
It's kind of quick, right?
This was late. I've actually had.
For like the hatch and the birds eggs?
No.
No, you know what? Steve was on a walk on Sunday and saw a little baby goose.
We had a couple times where we had two or three robin, sets of robins. Goes. Instead of helping. Yes.
I don't know.
The worst part was the one year when we had them and then the blue chain was in our neighborhood and took out every nest we had. And like one weekend, they were all smashed to the ground. It was pretty crazy.
Ready?
I got YouTube for it.
How are we? Call to order, the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 29th. First item on our agenda in just a second will be roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Sofa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Erin.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Sarone. Vocal singer.
Heard from Alderman Sarone, he will not be here. As I also believe from Alderman Malay, Lehman and Vocal Singer will probably be a little bit late. Up next is item two, as a reminder to please speak directly in the microphone if you come up to address this evening for the BATV broadcast recording. And then on to item three, which is approval of minutes from March 1st, or I'm sorry, March 11th, 2025, March 25th, 2025, and April 15th, 2025. Does anybody have any corrections, anything on them? Not going to get a motion?
Moved.
Second. For myself, a second by Lancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Items to be removed, added, or changed? Do we have anything on tonight's agenda to change? Okay. Then we'll go on to item five, which is matters from the public for anything not on the agenda. If you want to come up, just give us your name and then make sure that the little green light comes on on the mic when you start to talk. Thank you.
My name is Harry Palmier, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Batavia Brotherhood Banquet Planning Committee. Our 56th Annual Brotherhood Banquet will be held at Holy Cross Church next Thursday, May 8th, at 6:30 in the evening. The banquet has been going on uninterrupted since 1969, and before that it was held on a, not a consistent basis known as the Union Banquet. This evening is a gathering of men from all denominations to share a meal and Christian fellowship. Our attendance is generally 150 plus with the highest attendance being 300 people. Past speakers have been Gary Erwiler from Mooseheart, Kevin O'Connor from the Holy Cross, St. Vincent de Paul Conference, Sheriff Ron Hain spoke one year about his diversion efforts for getting employment for people that have crossed the line. So it's always a very uplifting and motivational evening with a Christian theme behind it. This year's banquet will feature Hugo Saltegerio as our speaker. Hugo is the Executive Director of Valley Sheltered Workshop in Batavia. Guided by his deep faith and dedication to serving others, Hugo works to develop creative employment solutions that recognize and appreciate the unique contributions of every individual. VSW offers transformative programs that build independence, self-worth, and a strong sense of belonging. Hugo believes that strong community partnerships, collaboration, and passionate service can make a lasting difference for an individual. Valley Sheltered Workshop was founded in 1966 by Batavia's Reverend Gilbert Johnstone, a devoted minister and loving father who joined hands with local leaders in Batavia to create a place of purpose for adults with disabilities, especially inspired by his son's need for meaningful work after aging out of school. Built on a foundation of faith and community, Valley Sheltered Workshop has grown over the 60 years, serving hundreds of individuals by providing supportive work opportunities that foster dignity, independence, and a self, a sense of belonging. Today, Valley Sheltered Workshop stands as a beacon of hope in the Fox River Valley, reminding us that every person, regardless of ability, carries a God-given gift to contribute to the world around them. And I would just remind the public also that this coming weekend is their annual pancake breakfast, so if you want to support Valley Sheltered Workshop, go eat some of their pancakes. So our event is just a once-a-year event. There's really the evening itself. Any excess proceeds beyond what are needed to fund startup money for the following, bank, year's banquet are donated to Batavia organizations such as St. Vincent de Paul at Holy Cross, Batavia Food Pantry, Valley Sheltered Workshop, RSVP, and Elder Care. So I appreciate the council's time to hear this, and then you're invited, as well as the general public, invited to attend the Batavia Brotherhood Banquet this coming next Thursday. Tickets can be purchased at lowercase, one word, batavibrotherhoodbanquet.org. It's $20 per ticket. It's the Thanksgiving dinner, turkey and all the fixings. And you can hear Hugo give his motivational speech, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in public? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
It's the consent agenda reads as follows. For approval, the late-night liquor license for J. Keller Corp. doing business as Bulldog Sellers, Tiffany Lee Higgins, the manager. An approval of the Cow Executive Session Minutes for April 15th, 2025, on the purchase of real estate. Ordinance 2025-28, amendment to the official zoning map for multiple BNSF railway properties, the Kirk and Rill Road Rail Crossing. Resolution 2025-63-R, approving task order number 10 with HR Green Incorporated for final engineering, permitting, and construction engineering for Mahoney Creek Tributary at Michael Wild Park Drainage Improvements. Resolution 2025-64-R, approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 15 kilovolt and 34 kilovolt underground circuit installation at 1789 Hubbard Avenue. Resolution 2025-60-R, authorizing the purchase of four Motorola Starcom APX 6000 radios for the Batavia Police Department. I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion by Beck, second by myself to accept the consent agenda. Anybody have any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
I do have one question.
Yep.
And maybe this is for chief or, but do we know if Baycom, because like I know certain things like this, obviously that's very expensive for radios, but I know these radios are expensive. Do we know if they have like, does that company have a registration with us for Motorola? Like are we getting those at a special price with the understanding we're going to continue our business with them, or is that we don't meet the volume, or have we had those discussions at all?
Well, they're our longstanding authorized Motorola dealer, and we do get special pricing through them.
Right. No, yeah, so like their partner pricing, but typically you can get a registration as well, so like they'll go to Motorola and get even more special pricing, right? Other than what their partner level's at, but obviously at five radios, I don't know if we can do that, but over the, hey, we're going to buy 20 radios over the next five years or whatever. You know, I do it on my side of the business too. We put all that together, we bring it to the manufacturer and say, hey, kick us a better price. So I just didn't know.
So when we initially made the purchase for Starcom radios, we did that cooperatively through the Tricom Central Dispatch. They purchased radios for all of the municipalities utilizing the Starcom radio network. I would imagine, I do not know, I was not a part of the administration at that time, but I would imagine that there was discounted pricing related to a purchase of that size.
Oh, I'm sure. Yeah. Sometimes these can be applied, you know, I save a couple bucks where we can, who knows?
Absolutely.
By that, I mean a few thousand.
All right, move on to item seven, which is ordinance 2025-25, amendments to Title 11 subdivision code, chapter nine, tree preservation regulations.
So I'm here tonight to discuss several minor modifications to the subdivision code for our tree preservation ordinance. Essentially, the city council in November 2023 adopted our original ordinance under ordinance 23-42 to establish our first tree preservation ordinance for the city. With that ordinance, we've accomplished a lot of preservation of trees through several developments and, you know, with other private property ownerships. In applying it, however, we found that there's several areas that could be ambiguous or were a little onerous in application, so we are back here tonight to provide clarification and seek to amend our ordinance. We had previously promised the city council, when this was here before you in 2023, that we would revisit this after about a year, and here we are now. Staff has worked with both the Plan Commission and Tree Commission over the last six months to propose these changes and work on any amendments, and what we have here tonight is what they have supported. The first proposed change is to provide clarification for the planning zoning officer's ability to exempt trees. Essentially, in the original adoption of the ordinance, the city council did not want existing single-family properties to be regulated by the tree preservation ordinance, noting that we do not have the staff capacity to regulate on single-family at this time for existing single-family, while also not wanting to discourage infill development on some of these lots that have existed for several decades. So what staff has proposed is to provide for the planning and zoning officer to exempt any lots that were platted prior to November 20th, 2023, which aligns with the original ordinance adoption for the tree preservation, as well as when the city started tracking and requiring development lots to be, to go through a subdivision process. So those two mechanisms are a great starting point to exempt these properties. Any lots that come forth now, whether it's someone who's wanting to divide just their single lot to create a new development lot, that new development lot would be subject at that time to the tree preservation requirements, or if it's a developer coming through, just like Ashton Ridge. So, you know, it's not preventing any lots like that that are going to be for new subdivisions. They would still be subject to the tree preservation regulation. So staff is proposing, just to add that language, to clarify what the city council's original intention was with the ordinance. The second, larger modification, is to create what's called a prohibited tree list. We had the undesirable tree list, and what we found in application discussing with several developers were that we're requiring the removal and replacement of some invasive species that truly are harmful. What staff is proposing and got the support of the Tree Commission is to create that separate list, and those trees, we can require them to remove but not replace. And then the other change would be is that the undesirable tree list still would exist, and if they chose to remove those trees, they would still have a reduced replacement rate of one tree. Undesirable trees typically, from our definition of that, is trees that are weak in nature, have some, some issues for development lots, meaning they require a high intensity of care. They grow rather large, such as like silver maples, and are not conducive to that lot. So that's one thing that we're proposing as a change. And then the other modification would be the, would be that, that special relief adding the prohibited tree list as ability to not require tree replacement or fee in lieu for those trees. If there's any questions from the committee of the whole, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Abby?
Thank you for the prohibited list. Really happy about that addition to the ordinance. And while I agree that developers who are taking the prohibitive trees off of these lots are doing us a favor, like as we saw with the Carriage Crest project, you know, that even though we don't want those trees there and they are super problematic, they do provide often like an aesthetic, you know, or a screening value to the property. And so was there any discussion, or are there other examples of communities that require at least some sort of replacement for the, for the taking down of those undesirable, I mean the prohibited tree list, or even like a fraction of what they take down?
So in my read of other communities, most do not, you know, require developers to replace trees that are on a prohibited list or that are considered invasive. One thing that staff has found with working with the city arborist and with other community and economic development staff is that a lot of these tree species also are in very poor condition from the arborist ratings when developers are submitting this. So even if they were of size to qualify for tree replacement, the condition of them, they're in such poor health or, or dead almost, that they would be exempt already based under those, those criteria. You know, staff, I think, has done a great job at encouraging applicants to preserve as much trees as possible, and that's where I understand your point with aesthetics and that they do provide some level of screening. And I think that we, as a community, need to have a balance, and that's where having the undesirable list is not requiring them to remove those trees, which will allow some other trees to remain. As we wrote it before, it did require those trees on the undesirable list to be removed, and some trees likely could have remained. So that's somewhere I think that it is kind of a compromise, and I think that our tree preservation ordinance is still better equipped than a lot of communities where they are still on a basic level. I think we are more of an intermediate level, and, you know, city staff, as well as a Tree Commission, can, you know, plan to continue to work on this and involve it as time goes. And there's plans to work with the Moore and Arboretum and their outreach organizations and see where we can improve.
Awesome. And my other comment was less related to this, but just as we're hearing from the Active Transportation Commission and the Environmental Commission, can we add Tree Commission to that rotation and hear from them on a regular basis too?
Any else have any questions? Would someone care to make a motion on recommending to council ordinance 2025-25, amendments to Title 11 subdivision code, chapter nine, tree preservation regulations?
Moved.
Second. Second by Euer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item eight, ordinance 25, or 2025-027, amending text of the zoning code, chapter six, glossary. Welcome.
Good evening. This is kind of a smaller scale set of amendments. One piece of background I didn't include in the memo, but we basically noticed this with another set of text amendments that we're having at that same meeting, but the commission, the Plan Commission did want some further feedback, and so that's where this element is behind, so probably as a whole looks a little more minor in scope from most text amendments. Essentially, this is a small set of amendments to clarify some of the sign regulations. And generally, it, this is only within the definitions themselves of how we define, you know, sign area and height and sign face, which goes to area. Essentially, the changes would clarify that sign height would be measured to the top of the installation itself. The previous language basically allowed for decorative elements to be excluded, but what we were looking to do with this set of amendments was to try and clarify that and kind of separate some of our regulations from the more decorative and where it applies, or what falls under the regulation and what doesn't. So with regard to sign height, we would be simplifying sign height definition to basically say, sign height is measured to the top of the overall sign installation. With regard to sign area, what the commission ultimately looked for with our, from our initial set of recommended texts would be to just clarify that when decorative elements are part of the sign message or sign, you know, whether that be logos, texts that would go into those areas, that it would be more clearly specified that those are included in area. There was a little ambiguity, you know, one could read some of that language to try and exempt out some things that we think would otherwise consider as sign it, so we wanted to clean that up. The last item is basically to update sign face to match what we did with regard to sign area. So that's basically the set of changes the commission was supportive. You know, they did take their time to make sure that they were satisfied with those changes, so we did go through hearings at two dates, but they did ultimately recommend by a vote of 6 to 0, the approval of the language that's for you tonight in ordinance 2025-027. So I can answer any questions if there are any.
Do you have any questions? I'd like us to be less restrictive and more creative, I think, with some of the signs. So I'm happy to see some of the changes here. Questions? Look for a motion to recommend to council, 2025-27, amendments to the text of the zoning code, chapter six, glossary.
Moved.
Second. Motion by, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Go on to item nine, which is ordinance 2025-29, implementing a municipal grocery realty, retailers occupation tax, and municipal grocery service occupation tax. Thank you to our governor for taking that away from us because it doesn't affect his budget. And that's what I'll say on it.
So as I put in my memo, the effect on the city of Batavia would be a reduction of our revenue stream of $1.2 million, which is significant. We have six grocery stores here in the city of Batavia, and as the Finance Director put in her weekly update, the Illinois Department of Revenue indicates that they have received 225 ordinances from other municipalities in the state of Illinois who have implemented this. And doing research for it, I could only find two municipalities who had voted against implementing the 1% grocery tax, and one of those two communities had no grocery stores. And so I think that we've discussed this before, and staff had received indication that we should bring this ordinance for a vote. I think it's important that we maintain our level of funding. Not implementing this would mean that we would need to either cut expenses or find an alternate revenue source, and of this size would likely have to be in property taxes, I imagine, to, to replace this source. So staff is recommending that we implement the 1%, and it has to be done by October 1st of this year in order to be implemented for, to be effective January 1st of 2026, which is concurrent with when the state 1% grocery tax ends.
Will they still collect that and then return that to us? That's my only fear is, they're going to have that money and they're still going to see that revenue stream go right through them again. At some point, they're going to be looking for more money. So I think, I guess the only question I would have is, is that protected enough if we do it and implement that, that they can't take that?
Yes.
You know, I mean, they've played with local, the LGDF forever.
LGDF is shared. So this is, because this is, they're just enforcing our tax. It's not, it's not really the same.
Just like our sales tax that we have.
Right.
The extra sales tax that we have, the local sales tax. That comes right back to us. I just want to make sure that that's clean and that that can't be toyed with by the state. That's my only concern with it. And really kind of, you know, bothers me that that comes down from Springfield and they just take it away because it doesn't affect their budget at all.
Right.
There's already, what'd you say, 225 communities? And the last thing that we want to do is have property taxes go up with the amount of complaints that we already have. I mean, I'm, they're going up enough with, that's, that's out of our control. So this is, this is main status quo, maintain status quo, and, you know, it's going to be beneficial for us, so.
Ron?
Yeah, the political word on the street here is, is that this whole thing was done by one individual so that in his race for president of the United States in a couple years, he was going to be able to say, I reduced Illinois proper's sales taxes. And then the state, the cities had the right to put them back, and I guess a lot of them did, but I, I cut it, and then it, the cities overrode me and they put it back. So it was just a motion to make somebody look good is what this was.
Abby?
I would support this because a grocery tax is so regressive, and it is going to hurt our most vulnerable citizens the most, now that it is in our control. If there is room to reduce it below 1% in the future and compensate it with other means of collection, if property taxes, if EV goes up, whatever, whatever we can find to substitute for this, I'm glad it's part of the conversation that we'll get to have on an annual basis with our budget, but yeah, I would love it to go away.
The one, one thing that I learned about that, I think, when this was proposed by governor, was anybody that uses an EBT or any type of other funding source, that tax is not charged on that. So there isn't a sales tax at that level when somebody is, is, is already got funding for it. So that doesn't hurt that portion, but there is still a group in between those two that yes, it does. But again, I think that, to me, a flat tax or sales tax is always a simpler way to do it that depending on whoever, however consumption is, that's how much tax you pay. So if you want to buy a $100,000 car, you get to pay tax on $100,000. You want to buy a $10,000 car, you pay tax on a $10,000 car.
It's 10 cents for every 10 bucks. I mean, you're going to go to the grocery store and I'm going to notice. You know what? Bring your own bag. If you like, you save your 10 cents, you're a $10 purchase.
Yeah.
Did that come from you, Sofa?
Hey, remember, it's not a bag tax. It is a fee. You have a choice. The tax you don't have a choice with.
I'm looking to keep our 1.2 million.
The fee you have. Yeah, I believe that that's the proper way to go. Mark?
Two things. I haven't seen a lot of the news around this. What other communities around here are doing it? I thought I saw North Aurora was, but I, I don't know if we have a list of who, close to us, because obviously we were a leader in the bag fee.
So I was on a Metro West call one month ago, and everyone was going to implement this. Who, and, and everyone is able to implement it ordinarily. Geneva would not be able to because they're not home rule, but I want to give props to the Executive Director of the Illinois Municipal League, Brad Cole. He lobbied heavily for non-home rule and home rule communities to be able to implement this tax. So it was unanimous in Metro West, and I believe Oswego recently adopted it.
Okay. The other question was, and I don't recall, because it's one of those things you just don't kind of pay attention to. I thought, are we following what was always implemented before? Not everything is taxable under a grocery tax.
That's correct.
So this follows the same guidelines as?
Yes, 100%. It's items that are meant to be consumed off premises. So if you had like a little cafe inside of your grocery store, the items that you bought there to consume on premises would not be taxed as well. Liquor is taxed separately, so the 1% does not apply. Liquor is taxed separately, so the 1% does not apply where the other taxes apply.
I thought there were some things, and like I said, I never really paid attention to it. I thought there were some things like perishables that were not taxed with a grocery tax.
That's my knowledge. I can look into that and get an answer for you before the city council meeting, but I'm not aware of that perishables or other food items.
Yeah, I thought there were some things that weren't because you look at your grocery bill and?
Yeah, there's stuff that's on there. And I think that that was one of the things that came out of that originally was the, the, it might have been IML, talking about ordinances that were given out so people could pass at the local level that would match what the state was doing. Was it so you didn't change either increase or decrease the tax amount?
Yeah, the intent was just to follow exactly what the, the state statute taxed.
Okay. Kevin?
Just to kind of follow up on a couple of comments here. The question I guess I have is, do we think the 1% is the right, right number to aim at? Are we just kind of taking it used to be 1, so we're going to do one again? Or is there a chance we could have 0.75 or, or something else and still meet our budgetary needs without maybe going the full 1%? I'm just kind of wondering what the budget looks like on that.
So from a budget standpoint, we had seven positions that we decided to put on hold as a result of shortfall in our budget last year. So while we could collect less than the 1%, then we would either have to, you know, continue to not fill those positions, and then also go a little deeper by cutting expenses.
We think the 1% is kind of the right number to aim at.
I think we need to leave the playing field as level as possible. I mean, we don't need to get into this.
It's what everybody else is doing.
Right, and have any, any differences out there. To me, we'll just, you know, we thought it was crazy when people start complaining about 10 cents for a plastic bag. If, if the percentages are different on food sales tax, that's going to be a whole nother round of insanity.
It is correct that when we're talking about the 225, everybody's just going with the 1%, right?
Yes, I've heard no deviation on the percentages.
Mark?
Yeah, unfortunately, only have one thing up on my phone. What I'm reading is exempt products are considered grocery food, such as fresh produce, dairy products, bread, and non-prepared foods. So that would be fruits and vegetables, meat, poultry, fish, cereal and grains, dairy products, breads and cereals. So is that what ours is following? I'm embarrassed.
Whatever's already in effect is what would be in effect.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing anything that's taxed. We're just keeping the tax.
Else?
Would we have a way for taxing, maybe putting the tax on different goods other than groceries under the sales tax umbrella, like say, and this is very nebulous right now, luxury goods or certain services instead?
So we actually do have the, the retail tax already?
Okay, that's fair. Just as a consideration, maybe not tonight, but in the future, if we do want to readjust things.
Max?
Yeah, I was just going to say to your point, the state of Illinois does not allow taxes on a lot of services at a state level. So to the extent you're looking to tax things like haircuts or legal services or accounting services, the state, I don't believe permits that as a taxability.
Right. Yet. Definitely under consideration every year.
Kevin?
Yeah, just a quick comment, and I think where some of the questions I'm hearing are coming from that I hear at least. You know, it's kind of a big stinker that this got put on our lap, right? Like, it's sort of unfortunate, but I guess here we are. But there is sort of a small silver lining in that it, you know, maybe if we have a little more local control, we can maybe start thinking about, maybe someday we can lower it, or maybe we can expand the definition of groceries or whatever the case may be. And I think that we should just kind of keep that in the back of our mind. It'd be nice if sort of staff pays attention if other communities do get creative with this, find ways maybe we can lower it, but expand it, or maybe we find a different structure that makes a lot of sense. I think this is an opportunity as much as it is a challenge. So we have the unfortunate pleasure of voting yes on a tax increase, but it also kind of gives us a little bit of control and a little bit of say in kind of how we implement it. Even if today we're mirroring what was there, we now have a little bit of control. We now have a little bit of say, so something to think about.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it's a tax increase. It's just status quo. We're not increasing any tax.
Yeah, we're, we're not lowering the tax. Frame it, frame it how you feel you need to. The tax went away.
Because continuation. Frame it as a tax increase if you want.
I'll go ahead, I'll own it, right? Tax went away, we're putting it back in place, but we have to, so whatever.
Other comments?
I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2025-029, implementing a municipal groceries, grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfa. Roll call, please.
Rosa.
Hi.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Sulfa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay. Uwer.
Aye.
Seron. Vocal singer. That's 11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to item 10, which is resolution 2025-62R, authorizing contract with FGM Architects for citywide facilities needs assessment. Max, welcome.
Well, hopefully this is somewhat of a more fun topic. So as I wrote in the memo, and we put this in the budget for this year, we're obviously in some facilities, both at city hall, fire departments, as well as the public works facility, that are approaching their age. And that also kind of requires some long-term planning really is what we're going for here to understand what are our long-term needs of our facilities, what are the costs of those, and so we can begin planning for them. Ultimately, we're a growing town. We've got, you know, facilities that are dating back in some cases to the early 80s. A lot of things are original to the early 80s in some situations. A lot of things date back to the early 90s as well. So part of this is really understanding, especially from a mechanical's perspective, how we can make our facilities as efficient as possible. You know, some of our facilities have nearly a dozen air handling units. That's not exactly the most efficient way to manage things. It also causes comfort issues for the staff in our buildings. Our fire departments were built in 2007, and, you know, before we know it, they'll be approaching 20 years of service. They're well-built facilities. They've served us well, and they continue to serve us well. But after 20 years, you know, like most of us know with our homes or, you know, buildings that they start to show their age, and that tends to go rather quickly. So really knowing where we're at, where our facilities are at, helps us plan for the future. Staff have been ecstatic in working with FGM throughout the police department space needs analysis. They've spent a significant amount of time already becoming familiar with our staff, our programs, and our facilities. Their pricing came in within budget, and we recommend continuing to work with them so that we don't really have to get another consultant up to speed. And then we've got one consultant working on one portion of the project, another consultant working on another portion of the project. And as we've had some common, or some conversations before, things may connect to one another, things may, you know, one part may impact another part. So having the same consultant through and through presents a, a good option for us, at least at a staff level. Like I said, we've been very happy working with Dave and Ray and the entire FGM team. And like I said, this is designed to look at city hall, both with likely, you know, 20,000 plus square feet of space opening up. That provides a lot of opportunities for either programming, but also city functions. Our two fire departments, like I said, approaching 20-plus years of service. And our public works facility where it, I detail a number of the deficiencies within the memo. Some of the things that, at the very least, we need to start looking and planning for so that we understand what those needs look like long-term so that they don't get to really crisis levels of facilities.
Much rather us be proactive and ready for changes and planning for changes than all of a sudden be down here and trying to figure out how we're going to pay for something that we didn't think about. We talked about this a lot when we first got into designing the two fire stations, that that was going to be a constant need into the future to look at the buildings that we had. And I think we did that, and, you know, now we're at the point of talking about the police department. I think we've kind of, in some respects, ignored public works and our ability to be able to serve downtown and everywhere else in the city from one location, you know, has brought, I think, some of that up to, you know, physically seeing some of the cramped quarters in different places. And the ability that if we do move the police station, that there are going to be opportunities to change the way we do things. And we did a lot of it already in the way we reorganized the entrances here and, and changed the building. But I think it is really important that we have a plan that we can figure out how we're going to implement and pay for before we have to do anything. So I think that's really important, and I think it's really good in this respect to maybe have the same group doing some of that work so that they are familiar with what the mindset is here, what the ideals are of our different departments, and how they want to be part of that and move that stuff to, you know, a place where we have a good plan to go forward with. So I think it's important that we do this. Anybody else have any comments? Kevin?
I guess, commenting a question. First off, I mean, just having done the, you know, seen the police need assessment shows kind of just how valuable this is. Like, it was really great doing the walkthrough, seeing the report. I think that was really helpful, so, you know, thumbs up to that. I guess the only question I have is, have we ever done anything similar to this in the past? Do we have any sort of groundwork for having had this type of assessment done on this size, you know, this scale and for this?
I believe something similar was done just for city hall itself, and I want to say that that was done back in 2013 or 2014, and it resulted in the project that we, the work that we have just done.
And if I recall, FGM reviewed that document as part of the police side.
Because we did work there.
Yeah, they looked at, it documented a lot of things like mechanicals, electrical code issues. Their update to the document confirms that either those things were fixed as part of the remodels or are continued to be issues. So that's one of the other reasons, because they've already reviewed some stuff, saves time, gets things moving faster.
Mark?
I guess a couple of things. Unfortunately, Alden Vocal Singer is not here. We had talked about this, that, I guess, I kind of look at the fire stations that 20 years old is not old by any stretch of the imagination. I'm not saying they don't need maintenance, but, but that seems like, okay, let's do the maintenance. We just did some maintenance on one of them, and we should continue to do maintenance, and we should know how to do maintenance. Our building department should know what we need to do for maintenance. That's the only thing I can imagine happening in those facilities. We're about to open up some.
Getting steady.
Yeah. We're potentially about to open up some garage space when the police department moves out. So I would like, I would figure that those are some calculations we can do on how many parking space, indoor parking spaces we need for public works for what they need. I think that that's a calculation we should be able to do. There's a comment that we're a growing town. We're not going to grow that much. We've, mayor's talked about it a lot. You know, western side of town, kind of landlocked, it's all forest preserve. We've got place for a handful of apartments if something ever happens downtown, but what are we talking? Maybe 1,000 people? I don't see that we're going to have a lot more facility needs in the next two, three decades. I, it just, it seems like, this is one of the things in the budget that I was kind of like, eh, I don't agree with it. And because we are, we're doing the police department, which gives us, if when that happens, it gives us the ability to, for city hall to move people into that space. We have a lot more space available all of a sudden. So it feels like something we could do internally a little bit to kind of get an idea on it without spending the money on this, because I just, I don't see the growth. I don't see the need to look at all these spaces quite yet until, until there's a number that says, yes, we are, you know, there are 30 vehicles that we want to park inside, and we can't get them all inside, or 30 active vehicles that are sitting outside. I don't know how many vehicles are sitting outside right now, and how many do we want to keep inside? How many really need to be inside? And I just, I'm lacking information to be able to say that this is something that we should move forward with. I'm also, I probably should have brought it up with the ramp. It's another no bid thing. Hey, we like these guys. That's great, but there are other professionals out there that do these things, and we should be bidding these things out more often rather than continually going back to the same contracts just because it's convenient. So that's my thought.
May I respond to the growth issue? So one of the things that was looked at in the fire department Manning study was what the Chicago Metropolitan Area for Planning has determined as 2040 populations for the Chicagoland communities, and ours was looking at 40,000 people, which is why the Manning study, part of the reason why they came up with that we have a deficit of 12 firefighters.
I'd like to see where that comes from. Where, I mean, based on what? Mooseheart's property. There's all that acreage south of Main Street. You've got possibility of apartment complexes, townhouses along Kirk Road. You've got 55 units available over on the east side off of Redant Road. There, there's places that you don't think are out there that we will be building on and that there will have density on that are going to provide or are going to require more service. I mean, exactly why I think we need to do this is so that way we have a plan to move forward. Are we going to need to add staff space at each one of the fire departments? If we add another engine, if we add another ambulance in town?
Well, you're talking about doubling our town. We're going to need to build another fire station. We're going to need a larger everything.
So it's a 3% increase.
I mean, we still have, what, 100 acres out on Fabian and Wenmuth that's out there that's to be developed. There's a lot of space left to build on. You know, yes, we are landlocked to the west by the forest preserves, but there's still a lot of place that could have some density.
I agree, but you're talking about packing us to the gills. I just, I don't.
If I may, the, the portion of the fire departments is primarily looking at mechanicals. That is, within our, our conversation with FGM, is to primarily look at really mechanicals and finishes. It's not a wholesale by any means update to the facility. They are good facilities, they're 20 years old, but mechanicals start to obviously fail after 20 years. And, you know, part of it is, we had, I think, probably close to half a million in unanticipated mold issues that arised in one of the fire departments, and that required significant mechanical upgrades that required us to go out and get engineering services, go out to bid for that, and so some of those things as well. And when it comes to, you know, the city hall side as well, we're going to have 20,000 square feet of space, most likely, having an actual plan and programming for that, talking about potentially bringing in other community organizations, expanding out city hall and staff, and having those be in there. These are all things that having a professional architect supports. You know, we have obviously skill sets on staff, and being able to do a comprehensive facilities assessment, looking at all the different components, looking at the mechanicals, the electricals, in addition to kind of existing work, is why we hired a professional who does this for a living. And, you know, ultimately, it's, it's an exercise that, you know, our neighbors to the north went through, our neighbors to the south have likely gone through with some of their facilities. It's something that most, if not all, cities tend to go outside for, to bring someone in to look at their facilities. Partially because as well, you know, staff may say, well, we think we really need this thing, and in fact, our architects may go, well, actually, you don't, or you didn't think about this. And so there, there's a level of professional expertise. And, you know, that, yeah.
Mark?
Yeah, I was just going to say that if we go, if we say that we're 28,000 right now, which it's not what's on our signs, but if we're 28,000 right now, we went to 40,000, that'd be a nearly 43% increase in citizens. That, I, there's no way. There's no, there's, there's not, there's not enough space out west for that. There's not enough space downtown for that. There's not enough space in Mooseheart for that unless we're building high rises. So I don't know where we get.
I think both things can be true, right? I mean, I, I don't necessarily think the study's a bad thing. You know, as long as, because I am with you, you know, I know the guys at FGM, they're fantastic, do great work. As long as the understanding is moving forward, hey, guys, don't be upset if we got to keep you honest a little bit, you know, as this thing phases out and we do all the, of course, you know, I think on these early stages, it's smart to have a partner, somebody who knows this space.
That's why it's a flat fee and not an hourly and those sorts of things as well.
Right. So, you know, that would be my only thing is, hey, as, you know, as long as the relationship is sound, hey, move them forward, guys, just, you know, don't be thrown if we got to keep you honest a little bit and get some bids and, you know, with that understanding. But, you know, the population thing kind of throws me. I'd love to see that data, but I think, I think the money is still probably well-spent. We're going to have some really good data out of it. We're going to have some really good data out of it that I think will, just due to the data, dates of our facilities. I, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, 20 years isn't old, but everything starts breaking at 20 years.
The technology changes that are there, just in, you know, your handlers and everything else.
Well, and it's good to know what's out there, right? If only thing, if, if, if anything, to solidify what you have in there today and give you the warm and fuzzies that, okay, this is going to last longer, or to say, hey, this new technology, the, the ROI is two years, you know, if we spend a little money here, we get it, but, you know what I mean? So those things are definitely worth knowing, and I like that they came in under budget, so that's great.
Robin?
Couple of things. Even if we did have staff working on stuff, that also does come at a cost. Their time is not free, so it takes them away from other things that they're working on and other responsibilities that they have. You know, I don't know if it's the exact dollar amount, but it does come at a cost. The other thing is that investing, I think investing in long-term, getting this kind of information can end up saving us money in the long run when we know and we can plan for, having that long-term plan. 20 years isn't very old, but there'll be 30 years before you know it. And so what do we need to look at at 20 years, at 25 years, at 30 years, so that we can budget? And again, you know, maybe we think we might need something and, and spend money on something we didn't actually need because we didn't have all the information. So I would be in support of this just for the information and planning purposes.
Listen, I would also note, I think probably the majority of this project would be not necessarily aimed towards future growth, but existing facilities, like Public Works is about, what, 40 years old now? And it, it is starting to show, if you've been in there, it's a lot of wood paneling, which I'm all for, but I know existing, you know, employees might not be so much. So I know part of it is also just updating existing facilities for current and near-term future needs. So that part of it, I'm definitely more in support of because, as I said, Public Works is getting a bit long in the tooth. I do agree, our fire department, our fire stations are very good condition right now, but that's also, I don't think, the majority of this project.
Oh, not at all. And I think your point is very accurate, that this is aimed towards looking kind of in the nearer term than the police department project, if that makes sense. And like you said, our fire department facilities are in decent shape at the moment, they're serving us well, but as we also heard, things can go quickly once they start going.
Yeah. I, I think some of a little bit of what kind of gives me a moment of pause is that I don't have anything to compare this against. You know, I think Lancy, Alderman Lancy brought up a great point, we should keep them honest. It seems like the synergy, I hate that word, but the synergy here makes a whole lot of sense, right? Like, working with these folks seems to add in well, but it also doesn't give me anything to compare it against, right? So the fact that I don't have a, another proposal to put next to it, to see, are they overcharging us for these synergies? Are they coming in fairly? Are they this or that? I just, I kind of just want to see, you know, a bid, right? I want to see, I kind of want to see some more options put out there. All that said, you know, this particular one makes a lot of sense to me, but again, you know, it would be nice if we had some bids, if we had put out, you know...
The only thing about it at this point, and it's just the facts, everyone else has seen what their proposal is, and...
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then maybe front-end. We need to, we need to front-end that, right? Before it comes to us, we need to have a, you know...
Okay, fair enough.
I would like to add that this is a professional service, and at least in the engineering realm, we would get qualifications and review their, just the qualifications based on what we were looking for. In another sealed envelope, we would have costs for that proposal, so we would rank the firms that we asked to provide us proposals for based on X, Y, and Z criteria, and it's been presented in many of our memos. So this would be very similar. We're not going out and getting a price and comparing against it. We want to have the best quality of services, so it would not be a bid. This is not a contractor, so professional services fall under that. And I will just add, since I have the microphone for one second, if you guys have not been to Public Works, I invite you to come over because one of the things that we are, you know, we've looked at is space for our, all of our field and maintenance workers, they, a majority of men, we have very few stalls, and the bathroom facilities are just very small. We have a big, one shower in that facility, we have one single woman's washroom.
What facility?
So, those are some of the things that we kind of put on hold previously, but then there's also equipment needs, as was mentioned, that the longevity of those pieces could be extended if they're kept outside of the elements. All of engineering's vehicles are kept outside, along with some of streets and PPS, and some of our equipment, like our leaf machines are stored outside as well. So feel free to come on over, and Rahat, Jeremy, or myself can show you guys around if you are interested in looking at it.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that explanation. It, it would help me just to have the foil, right? Like, so I'm certain, I'm certain we're making the right choice here. Like, we know they've done good work, we've seen it, seeing that other envelope, right? And, and then maybe you explain it to me, because I'm not the expert, I don't know, but do tell me, why is this firm better than that one? That's kind of just what I would like to see, so that we're keeping them honest, so that we're kind of on top of it.
So let me walk back to kind of how we chose FGM in the first place. If you recall, I, I don't recall if you were on council at the time, but many of you were, and we brought in really two firms at the end of the day. We brought in Dewberry and FGM. As part of this, I did want to make sure that pricing was within reason, and so I looked up a number of other communities. Geneva did a similar study, theirs was right kind of in the 110 range about two years ago, so something that kind of aligns. I looked at other communities that use other consultants, very similar kind of in the low hundreds range. So I feel confident that the pricing we're getting, even though it hasn't gone out to bid, is still very competitive pricing. It's based on how much time they think they put in or what they need to put in. We did refine scope in some circumstances to kind of address pricing issues. So to all those points, you know, we have a firm that we felt, we have a very strong working relationship with, that has a very strong knowledge of our existing facilities already because they've done some of that work. We compared their prices to others and found that they were within, you know, reason of pretty much anyone else. And so that's kind of why we've brought this forward. And, you know, I understand the, the bid issue, and that's something that we'll definitely work to address in the future.
The value of them already knowing our, our processes though is, is huge. I mean, in these, in these preliminary phases, like, we don't want to have to rehash all that stuff. You know what I mean? Like, you guys know X, Y, and Z, and then, you know, yeah, so.
Valid, you know, very valid.
With the work on this building, over the time that I've been on the council, there's been lots of work done in this building. All kinds of mechanical stuff, all the facade, all kinds of work has been done on it. And one of the somewhat consistencies has been architecture. Firm that's worked with that and engineers that have worked with it, because it does, in a lot of respects, pay dividends to have the same people working on phases one, two, and three when they're dealing with the same structure or the same goal that we've given them as it's changed and morphed into what it is today. So I, I feel confident, you know, that in a contract like this, that it's not, you know, as long as it's not a double-price contract or something from what we would normally deal with, that I don't have a problem with that, because staff does have to make those decisions on those professional contracts, how they handle that, and who they want to work with. Any other...
I don't make the motion that we recommend the Council Resolution 2025-62-R authorizing a contract with FGM Architects for citywide facilities needs assessment. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Barata.
Hi.
Lancy.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Peeper.
Hi.
Malone.
Hi.
Solfah.
Al.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Youwer.
No.
Suron. Vocal singer.
I'm going to abstain, just because I missed so much of the conversation. I'll watch it and then have an informed vote next time.
And yes, one no, one abstention.
Moving on to item 11, which is ordinance 2025-30-R, amending the 2025 wage and salary ordinance for non-collective bargained employees' utility billing changes. Wendy? Good evening.
Good evening. Our utility billing division, as all of you know, is serves as a point of contact for our residents, specifically for payments of all our utility, city utilities, water, sewer, garbage stickers, electric, all of that piece of it. Currently, right now, the staffing structure looks as they, they have two customer service representatives and one utility billing supervisor. At the beginning of this month, we had a retirement from one of our customer service representatives, retired after 23 incredible years of service. And so doing this position, so this gave us an opportunity to review and take a look at the current structure and how it has been working over several years. The changes that have happened, as you can imagine, in 23 years, even the processes, many of them are very different than today, than they were before. What we are proposing is just an adjustment to the organizational structure of the utility billing department to better assess and meet the needs of the types of job duties that are being accomplished. So the structure that is being proposed is that there would be one utility billing clerk, which would reside at a pay grade five. Previously, they were considered a customer service representative, which was at a pay grade six. And so this person is processing payments, greeting customers at the counter, answering phone calls, so their day is very busy with that constant as far as doing those processes. Additionally, then, we would propose there'd be a senior utility billing clerk, and this position is doing all of those responsibilities. Well, in addition to that, they're performing the weekly billing duties, which is doing the bills specifically, processing the billing cycles, which is more technical and more specific, and so they're doing that process. And then lastly, our current utility billing supervisor, over the years, their position has, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up just a bit, with that senior utility billing clerk, we would be recommending that to go to a pay grade seven, which that current customer service representative position is a pay grade six. And then lastly, our utility billing supervisor, as I mentioned, over the years, that position has continued to grow. Additional responsibilities has become more technical and more skilled in regards to what they are doing. And additionally, they are going to also be doing some finance duties, such as balancing revenues in the general ledger and balancing receivables, which is, up until now, has been handled through the finance department, actually through Peggy. So the recommendation, as I mentioned before, is reflecting the changes of job responsibilities, duties, and skill requirements, as well as updating the job title. It was called the customer service representative. I feel like utility billing more specifically identifies the type of position. And as you can imagine, this, the billing process has become quicker with technological advances, but has also become more skilled with the types of systems being used. And additionally, a positive of the technology that we've seen over the years is that residents or people calling or coming in and meeting face-to-face with them is they now have access to a lot more information than they ever did before, and so they were able, in most cases, to be able to be that point of contact and answer many of those questions. Where in the past, if they had a question about their meters or things along those lines, they'd have to pass them on to another department. So I think from a resident perspective, hopefully that experience has been, continued to be even more positive and more simpler for them. Additionally, during the evaluation with these proposed changes, we did go back and reviewed all of the proposed changes with our appropriate comparables. One thing to note as well, when we look at our comparables, we are one of, as you know, one of the few communities that operates at electric utility. So when we're looking at a utility billing clerk in other communities, some of our comparable communities, and we're looking at wages, our employees have the next level of skill in addition to just water and sewer. So they not only are doing water and sewer, but they're also managing, addressing and helping with payments for the electric. So the comparables with the recommendations that we're making do fall within line of our comparable communities with electric utility. So with this proposed change in the retirement, the first year, there's a cost savings based on the retirement and, and the adjustments would be recommended. So this first year, there's a cost savings of $18,104. We, I went out five years, and every year looked at the cost of it. If you add all five years together, the five-year period total cost all in is $421. I can answer any questions anyone has on the proposed changes.
I think we can find $421.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm noticing that one of the positions is going from a pay grade six to a seven, and the other one's going from a six down to a five. I don't love paying, you know, having a position pay less. Can you sort of talk through, it sounds like they're doing a lot of the same work as before, but we're going to bump them down? I mean, have a position that goes down?
So one of the things, absolutely. So one of the things we looked at was, currently, we had two customer service representatives, and what really were their duties? And over the years, they really were doing some different duties. Them, one was doing that higher level, and the other one was doing basic, yet they were paid at the same level. So we reviewed that and said, is that, when we're going, now that we went out, I'll give you an idea, we went out and posted for that, the customer, the utility billing clerk level position at a pay grade five. We received over 300 applications, so definitely still desired salary range and skill level. So, yeah, that is why, I agree, that it is a difference. So you see now, there's one is a senior and one is kind of that entry-level clerk position as they're coming in.
That employee that retired, and thus we're hiring a new one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not affecting somebody's existing life?
No, no.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make the motion for ordinance 2025-30, amending the 2025 wage and salary ordinance for non-collective bargained employees and the utility billing changes? Some move. Second. I saw for a second by Lancy. Roll call, please.
Barata.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Solfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay. Youwer.
Aye.
Suron. Vocal singer.
Aye.
So that's 12.
Motion curious. Item 12 is a discussion on an update to stormwater management, going from Bulletin 75 to Bulletin 76.
Evening. I love coming up here to talk about stormwater with you guys. And as I was writing this memo, the one name that kept on coming to my mind was Mike O'Brien, Mike O'Brien. What would Mike O'Brien do? So, for those of you that were not on the council, back when we were looking at the floods from 2015, we had Ward 1 in Area 3, and Ward 1 was designed, I would say in the 50s and 60s, it was designed per the code at the time, and we were undersized, we had ponding in the roadways, and inadequate drainage and stuff like that. I believe most of the drainage has been improved with enhancements to civil engineering and requirements and stuff like that over the years, but the thing that has changed is the rainfall intensities, and that's what the bulletin, we used to do Bulletin 70 back in the 70s, always going off of historical data. And same thing happened when we looked at Bulletin 75, which was just looking at the most recent information. And the people that write these are with Illinois State Water Survey. I've seen both of them a couple of years ago. Marcus, I can't remember what his last name is, he's involved in all three of them, and then Jim Angel was involved in the two original ones. Jim Angel has since retired. Marcus has also kind of, on the retirement in way out, but he did present at the conference. And with climate change, people are talking about, well, what's going to happen? Where is the future going to be? And so they were looking, and instead of looking at historical data, they were doing predictions and projecting what is going to happen. So this has gotten people in the stormwater community talking and wondering how we're going to address this while we look at developing. And I know we do have smaller areas in town, but there are still chunks of land that this would affect. Our Ashton Ridge fell under the Bulletin 75, and when we were going from Bulletin 70 to 75, there was a period of time where we grandfathered some properties in under that You might, um, have put in a twelve-inch with a bulletin seventy, and then with seventy-five, it increased it to a fifteen-inch. And all those implications have costs, and you also need to provide more stormwater volume, which then takes up more land, which doesn't allow them to build as much. Um, and the list goes on and on. So, in this memo, I kind of just took some information that WBK kind of summarized in a nice table and sent over to me, um, just kind of showing what this bulletin seventy-six entails. And it's looking at years, which kind of scare me, as I was sitting in that presentation, this is the first time I actually felt old, because I'm like, oh my goodness, I don't know if I'll be here in those years. But it's looking at twenty fifty, twenty seventy-five, and twenty one hundred. So, um, the rainfall increases four, seven, ten percent year over year, and then that chart kind of just shows you where we're at. Um, and Jody Willnack over at the county has emailed, we are a certified community, which allows the city of Batavia to review our own stormwater applications and follow the King County Stormwater Ordinance. And, um, therefore, we can make stricter decisions on what we want to do with our permitting. Um, and so they're looking at reenacting their stormwater management committee. There's people that have changed. Um, and then they'll be having a committee meeting and discussing some of these items. But from each municipality, they would, that are certified, they would like to know, um, if we should continue using the existing rates of seventy-five, or if we should be looking ahead at bulletin seventy-six and requiring developers to design for those rainfall amounts, and if so, which year would we look at choosing? Um, and then if you feel, yeah, I guess. And then the other one was just any other questions or things that should be discussed at that level. So, as I said, this is cost implications for any type of development, and, um, there's two sides of each, you know, either way you look at it. Rahat brought up an excellent point, we don't know what our neighbors are gonna be doing, and if we're looking for a development to fill the last few pieces of property, what if Geneva doesn't require them to look at twenty fifty, but we do? They're gonna have to provide more stormwater detention in Batavia than, um, Geneva. So there's that. But then, what if we decide we want to go with current bulletin seventy-five, and the rainfall continues to increase as they project? And then we're looking at potential stormwater improvements when the life cycle of the storm sewer system is up. So then that's an improvement cost that the city has to bear, although that may be not within our lifetime, it's just something to consider. So I just wanted to bring that here for some feedback, because I know this is a very passionate topic. Like I said, first person that came to mind was Mike O'Brien, and what he fought for while he was on the, um, council. So with that, I would like to open up for discussion, any questions you may have for me?
Mike would have just said he wanted the biggest pipe that could go there.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever was the biggest, furthest out, you know, projection, that's what he'd wanna go with. I, I guess I'd ask first, what's the county gonna do? Because the county's stormwater management is what we follow, correct?
Correct. And they are gonna, um, have their stormwater management committee, so they meet by committee, and they don't have that all set up, so, um, they're gonna be scheduling that meeting. But they're just looking for some feedback and kind of get a grasp on where people might be standing and, um...
Because I'd wanna know, you know, I think most of the communities around us right now follow the King County Stormwater Management Ordinance, right? They all have...
Yeah, everybody in the county does, and then we could have restrictions. So for Batavia, we have reduced release rates for, um, kind of like the Highlands area because of some flooding concerns. It's typically a point one CFS per acre release rate, that one's a point zero eight. So each municipality can imply and put stricter guidelines on that, which is what, um, they're allowing us to do if we so chose to go with, you know, say they decided to still stay with seventy-five, um, we could choose fifty, or we could say, you know, we'll revisit this and look at it in the future and in other five years and see where we're at. Um, it has changed, I think it's like seven point five eight was the previous, and now it's like eight point five six for the hundred-year twenty-four-hour event, which is what stormwater detention is modeled for. Um, so that's almost an inch for that hundred-year event that you have to provide for over whatever amount of acres that you have.
So I'm looking at the chart here, and our bulletin seventy-five for a ten-year, you know, is five point one five inches, um, of rain or water heading out. Then if we look at, you know, the seventy-six and the year twenty seventy-five, right, um, kind of right in that middle there, we're up about third point three. Just, can you explain to me, um, that difference in sort of point three, uh, of an inch, you know, uh, what does that sort of practically mean? How would that substantively impact a development? If we told them you have to plan for five point one five versus you have to plan for five point four six, what does that like mean for them?
It depends. So the, um, two-year is usually a first flush and kind of looking at a smaller, um, size storm event. The ten-year is what we design all our storm sewer pipes for, and then the hundred-year is what we design our volume for in our stormwater basin. Um, and most of our basins are all above ground, not underground storage, because that's a little bit more difficult to, um, look at, but those definitely can be options. But it just depends on how much areas tributary funneling to that one system, how big the overall development is. If it's a smaller piece, it may not be that, um, much as far as cost implications, because you're maybe only increasing a couple pipes, like going from a twelve to a fifteen, or a fifteen to an eighteen. Um, you just have to increase at that one increment for some of those smaller amounts. And again, this was just seeing something from the nineteen fifties, and then we're seventy years later, and having to deal with that, and it's undersized where the street, because that was designed for the two-year, but like I said, now we all design for the ten-year. Um, and the storms have also become more free, or they're quicker and flashier. So we might have a little bit more on-street ponding and flooding, and the systems flush it through. So if you have a big development, it may have bigger implications. I know it's not a simple answer, but it just kind of all depends on the magnitude of the project as well.
And so what sort of, um, water basin is a development looking at? Is it simply bound by the plot lines? You know, let's use Ashton Ridge for an example, right? When they're developing their stormwater basins, are they only looking at the property they own, or do they need to go out into the neighborhoods, the entire basin that's gonna be sort of draining through their, through their...
Yes, so when you look at, um, drainage collectively as a whole system, you look at existing conditions, and then you look at proposed conditions. So when you're looking at the existing condition, you're looking at any type of off-site flow that's coming through your site. You have to calculate that and still make sure that you can bypass that. So all of our detention basins have an overflow weir, which is just kind of, if you have a berm, and then it's kind of a, just a cut out there, so that whatever it is, it might be ten feet, it might be fifteen feet, at a foot of height, that, that water can just bypass that, because we, that development does not need to detain it, because it's been detained somewhere else, in theory, at whatever, um, it was allowed for at that time. But this, it does not need to be accounted for in any of the storm sewer systems that are on that development. We just need to bypass it through their pond. If there's volume, it could be stored there. Um, but we always look at that to make sure that we're not increasing any discharge from a site from previous.
Just so, so I'm sort of fully understanding here, if we go, if we're like, hey, our standard should be the, you know, one hundred-year, uh, bulletin seventy-six, you know, bottom right-hand corner, um, based upon the upstream developments, you could have one development have pretty significant impacts, and another development have fairly minimal impact, uh, to their cost relative to what it would be under bulletin seventy-five? Am I understanding that correctly?
Anything that comes in from off-site, you only need to take that number. If there's ten CFS coming in, you just need to make sure that you size that weir, that slot in your basin, so that that flow can flow over it. It does not need to be accounted for. So they are taking care of that on their development. We, this new development does not need to take care of that, just what is there. So everybody is responsible for their own. It wouldn't be any different.
Yes, Leah?
I was curious, how many ten-year events have we had in the last ten years? Do we, do we even know, like...
I don't have that number in front of me, but I mean, I know that some of these rainfall, some of these storms are hitting faster and quicker, so they might end up being a seventy-five year event, but it's really a short duration, it's just how fast that rain is falling. Um, and those were very noticeable before we did the Mahoney Creek Detention Basin, because that's super flashy, Kirk Road drains very fast. Um, we can look at that, there's data, I don't know that off the top of my head. But usually, if we had something that was, um, exceeding a ten-year event for that twenty-four-hour period, you would see surcharged water on the street. And everything is calculated, so that you'll always have a drive lane to go through, and it does not cover the whole street.
I guess what I'm maybe trying to ask is, um, have we had more flooding in the last couple of decades than we expected? And do we need to, you know, plan for that in the future with our developments?
Well, it depends on when you're referencing back to, because, again, like I said, we always looked at historical data, so we always looked at something that happened in the past to prove that this was accurate. But we've been able, scientists have been proving that climate change is real, and it's affecting things in the cycles of the storm, events have been changing, and so it's kind of evolution is changing and how things are being looked at, and just trying to prepare everybody for it. Um, so maybe when I first started in my career, I don't know that I would have guessed that this is how much things would have changed. Um, and it's just all a function of the nature around us.
Yeah, I, I mean, my, my question was gonna be, you know, how accurate has, was bulletin seventy for its lifetime and their projections there? Because, you know, I just call a spade a spade, I've been told my whole life that, you know, Florida's fallen into the ocean, it's, it's not. So, or it hasn't yet. So, um, and every time they tell us there's gonna be this milestone of this is gonna be the decade, it's not. So, you know, where is the data to support this from, uh, the numerical data, right? That's how this should have been, in my opinion, collected, not just to say, we have a general sense that there's more flash flooding because the storms are coming down faster, volume of water. Well, does that equate, though, to those actual numbers?
I will say...
Over that time?
Um...
Because that, that to me just seems large.
It is, and I don't know that I would disagree that the gentlemen that have been doing this, this is their...
...to predict.
It is, and this is something new. Um, I, you know, they are, names are plastered all over Illinois State Water Survey, they are...
Oh, I believe that.
They, you know, I think they're very knowledgeable about that. Um, it, there was a long period where we didn't update that stuff, and it took a while to update, to get that seventy-five. Um, I can look back into that and see if there's more information. I know I...
I mean, if you had your perfect way, I mean, maybe as an engineer, you want the biggest, you know, the, the Mike O'Brien way, right?
No, I, I don't think...
You wouldn't?
I don't think I would do that right now. I mean, I know it's a balance of risk, reward, cost, benefit, you know, so you have to look at that and see where you're at, what is viable, because, um, I don't think I had this on here, but you know, there was a chart that they showed us at the conference that said, if you built this pond in nineteen eighty, which there's plenty of subdivisions in town that are built in nineteen eighty, and now you're looking and interpolating any of this information in these storm events, now you are at a hundred percent capacity and being able to utilize it based on design, now you might be at seventy-five percent. And then you keep on looking at all these basins that we have in town, and there's no more land to expand. Um, and then the, the volume now maybe in one of these tables from, or the years in the bulletin seventy-six, we're gonna be at fifty percent capacity. So it's something that's real, it's really hard to kind of guesstimate, and...
We're using more data points now, too. So hopefully, we've gotten better at designing since the eighties and, and, you know, so, I mean, I don't, I don't discredit anything, I just, I just wanna be sure, you know, if we do choose to go with the hundred-year, you know, because my thought process on it is, the day one cost of doing something like this is, is much less than the day two cost, right? Or am I wrong? I mean, it's gotta be, right? You know, if you're bringing up land already, it's much cheaper to lay the, you know, biggest, best pipe you can then, so that...
Yes, and...
But I like the competitive idea, too, with our neighbors. I didn't really think about that, and that is a good point.
And it's who's paying, so, uh, right now, putting these in means the developer...
Right.
...is paying. And, but if we size it too low, then before its end of life, we'll have to increase.
Yeah.
And I'm not asking for anything to be in writing, it could just be kind of a feel, and I'm gonna get back to the county, but I didn't wanna take this decision on myself, because I know this has been a big, hot topic, and we've spent a lot of, um, capital investing and improving our infrastructure. So I wanted to bring it before you guys and let you know. I mean, while I was sitting at the conference, I was texting engineering, letting, you know, I'm like, oh my goodness, this is like one of the coolest presentations I've been to, and it just really made you think and had a lot of us engaged, and so, obviously, it's gonna take a little bit of time for the county. I'll be happy to come back and report what they're doing as well. It can either just be an informal email to kind of give you guys updates, and if we need to make any other further decisions, um, I'm happy to come back and do that as well.
I'll just say, you know, as long as I've lived in town, been here since seventy-one, and seeing the differences as subdivisions were added, where they were added, how they were added, there are so many differences in how water travels in the different areas of this town. Um, I mean, there's an entire subsection just to the west and north of us that doesn't have storm sewers, and then is bounded on all sides by areas that have storm sewers. So, you know, the same thing is true over on the, the lower west side, that there are spaces like that, and the same thing's true in spots on the east side, that the water travels completely different because of the way the subdivisions were designed, or that stormwater management really wasn't an idea when they did some of that. And to see the differences in those areas and to know that, you know, yeah, it didn't really ever seem like there was that big of a problem, even in my neighborhood, and since I moved in there, there have been many times when it's been curb to curb water, you know, in front of a house that has three drains within, you know, five hundred feet of my house, and it fills the ponds up, and they hold the water, and then it drains down the next day or the day after. So those are, to me, designed correctly. There's just a lot more water than I think was planned for to be in some of those areas, you know, and that's something I think, when it comes to stormwater, we have to think about, it's not just what we're allowing today or how we're designing, it's what doesn't have any stormwater, you know, really have stormwater management, where it's really using the streets to move the water, and then it has to get to the river.
I can list off the top of my head, there's Colonial Village with, which is Brandywine over there off of Thirty-One, that's all ditches. We just, um, incorporated Chilim Circle over there off Hart Road. We have the Highlands, none of those areas have stormwater detention. Woodland Hills, obviously, they did not have stormwater detention, they have the creek that runs through it, and that's where everything discharged. So, um, we're looking at implementing rural cross-sections and, um, to improve the drainage ditches and culverts under there to convey that water. But, yeah, Ellen accurately described the city.
There's, there's a lot of differences in just within blocks of each other. Leah?
I just wanna make one clarifying point, like, I'm in agreement that this discussion needs to happen. Like, we've been in our house for twelve years on the west side, and we've had our road impassable because of flooding at least two, if not three, times in the last ten, eleven, twelve years. So I just, I do think this is, um, very important for the future of Batavia and for our houses that, you know, are impacted by this.
And I will add to that, just because I'm up here, is a reminder that especially when it's wind and there's leaves on the tree, or we're dropping leaves, that some of the flooding is caused because the storm drains aren't cleared, and everyone can go out there and do their part. I know our street division does the best that they can to get out there and sweep those streets before we have a storm event to help get the water in the drains, but that also has an effect on why sometimes the water is on the street.
Kevin?
Yeah, uh, two things. The first one, I think today, you're just asking sort of what our general thoughts are for you to report back to the county on, is that right? We're not making any sort of decisions or...
No formal decision. No formal decision.
As the county considers it.
You guys can be split.
Great. So then, my second comment is that it seems to me that taking the Bulletin 76 approach makes a whole lot of sense. If you look at the methodology, the paper's actually pretty in-depth and pretty great. They are looking at change from, you know, projected climate change from almost nothing all the way up to five degrees of change, which is huge, right? So when it comes to sort of the uncertainty that comes in climate modeling, they've written that in here, right? They've taken it into consideration, everything from kind of nothing happens all the way up to kind of worst-case, day-after-morrow kind of stuff. For me, that sort of answers some of the questions I have. Does the Bulletin 75 make sense, only looking at historic data? Well, no, not anymore, right? Have they done their due diligence? It does appear that they have in helping us prepare for both the best-case and a worst-case scenario. So just from my perspective, it seems like the Bulletin 76 makes a whole lot of sense. If I'm reading it correctly, we're also being asked, like, which, you know, what should our standards be? You know, it seems like kind of in the middle, right? Of that Bulletin 76 seems to make a lot of sense to me, based on kind of the study, which you linked, and is dense but isn't inaccessible. Abby?
Oh. Oh. Could you send us the presentation?
It's LinkedIn, the-
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's LinkedIn memo. There's lots of data, and just make sure when you're looking at those charts, you're looking at northeast Illinois, because there's all the different sections, so that is what we fall under. And, yeah, it's, if the county decided they want to stay on 75, would we want to do 76? Would you, would you guys want to be more restrictive or allow certified communities to be different than the county? If they choose to go to 76, then we're stuck as we follow their ordinance, but they're just trying, I think, to get a feel for it as well as they embark on this journey to figure out what's going to be best for the area.
I love the fact with neighborhoods are being built, that this is being taken into consideration. As a representative of Woodland Hills, I would love to see what we could do to help improve the Woodland Hills area, because we do have neighbors that still have their yards flood and everything. So I'm in support of moving up, you know, making it, you know, more important, but being selfish for my Woodland Hills neighbors, I would love to see them have the 100-year when we redo it, somehow see what we can do, incorporate some.
I've been out to many residents out there, and Dave is back here as well, and I'm sure he has. Unfortunately, that area was designed to not disturb a lot of the interior besides the roadways, and there's not a lot of rear yard storm sewer, so there may be localized ponding in that neighborhood, that whole residential neighborhood. There might be a storm drain for every 10 yards, as opposed to the newer subdivisions where there are every two to four yards get a storm drain. But we-
If we ever have to replace it, I would love to see what we can do to make it better.
I'd definitely be in support of moving to Bulletin 76. I don't know which path it makes the most sense for us, but looking at data and projections and everything seems to be a much wiser way to move forward.
Okay.
Abby?
I'm also in support of 76, and I sit on the stormwater committee, so I've taken a lot of notes, and I'm trying to gather a lot of feedback, and so if you ever have any other comments or questions, and I can also report after committee meetings on how the rest of the communities are leaning. I know in my six years, we were just finishing up Area 3, and Ward 1 when I got on. We have since then done the detention at Mahoney Creek. We have seen the Carriage Crest drainage issues. Am I forgetting any? I know that there's-
And we will be embarking on the Michael Wild-
And the Michael Wild, yep.
-project.
And, and so I know that I have sat here in, in the last six years and like, been like, God, why didn't you design that better past people? You know, I kind of sit here and make decisions based on not having people shake their fists at me in 50 years, based on the decisions that we made. You know, if anybody ever has any questions about climate modeling, real high-level, more climate, not so much precipitation-specific, but I'm happy to talk to anybody about that. I did study that in college. I, I also wanted to say, you know, just from both a residential, you know, in our yards, kind of a gut feeling of like, yeah, we don't want to impose any more water in people's basements when we've got this, the flashing with the going into the streams, the going into the river. This is where we're getting so much erosion. This is where we're degrading habitats, where that water is entering and exiting our rivers and stream systems. This has major ecological ramifications across the board, not just for our city and our residents, but for just the broader ecological health of this area. So being mindful of that and being able to build for that so that we're not hurting our rivers and streams any more than we already are. And I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking about the insurance rates for future homes, too, as they're building. If we don't, I think this is going to come into play, and what our standards are for how we build is going to impact people's affordability, even if we are more expensive in the front end, or they can't build as much on a piece of land. There's other implications down the road for if we don't build more stringently.
Mark?
Want to talk to you about this later, because I'm always interested, especially that you're on that committee. I'm always interested. We tend to throw in a lot more storm drainage, which then forces water very quickly to rivers and streams, rather than having ditches. And we've, we've moved away from the ditches, and a lot of the areas with ditches seem to have less problems, but that's just, that's probably anecdotal in my, in my thought process, because then it naturally drains into the earth.
Then going down. Where we don't have ditches anymore, then we have the detention basins that are going down and then slowly dispersing out into the rivers.
There's still culverts through the ditched areas, so a majority of those continue to go down and eventually get into a storm sewer system, which then, yes, it does get to the river, like, I don't know the map off the top of my head, but I'm envisioning that's exactly what Colonial Village does and gets across 31 and makes its way down to the river without being detained, where new developments and even the park improvements that we've done, when we did the Woodland Hills section between Winter Green, at Winter Green and Woodland Hills Road, we had a settle, a sediment basin, so the water discharged and had to build up a little bit to let the solids drop out before it got into the creek. So those practices are all being implemented, and that's, some of those things will be introduced into Michael Wild as well.
Thanks for the info, and hopefully, between the two of you, you got what we talked about, and it gets back to the county, and then as that changes, let us know.
Okay, yes, I have some good information. Thank you, guys, for the discussion. Appreciate it.
Item 13, which is a presentation on the strategic plan update. Let me pull that up. Alrighty, so we're about a quarter of the way through 2025, and we're trying to give kind of quarterly updates to you all about where we're at in the strategic plan, so that, you know, you're aware, especially as things are going well, things are high in schedule, things are ahead of schedule. We're kind of in several places. But a couple of things that kind of happened since our last update is, we've had some leadership transitions. And especially when we're talking about strategic planning, that's a big deal, because our leadership is probably some of the most important people in helping making sure we're hitting our strategic direction. Obviously, our frontline and line-level staff are doing a lot of the implementation of this as well, but making sure that as we're making all of our decisions on a daily basis, that we're making decisions that are in line with our strategic plan and what you've set forward. So like I said, a lot of the early part of the year, especially in our Police and Public Works Department, have been getting everyone up to speed, especially with a lot of new department staff, superintendents, various promotions, et cetera, and kind of role transitions. So that's just, that has taken a good amount of time, but it's something that has been a really good conversation, and we've done some cleaning up of the strategic plan as well. That's my other invite. If you haven't taken a look in there, make sure to be checking it out, you know, as often as you feel is appropriate for yourself. We've made some cleanups to kind of make things look a little neater, flow a little better, and kind of show more appropriately where we're at on some items. Like I said, a lot of items in the 2025 budget tie back to strategic planning, and those are being implemented throughout this year. And kind of our main, I guess, message point for this, this update is, we do feel like we're on track. We're, we're kind of sometimes surprised by how much progress we've made in so little time, but at the same time, those have been a lot of our lower-hanging fruits, things that have been able to be knocked out, put in place, and moved forward. Many remaining items are a lot of process improvement, time-intensive and resource-intensive items, so that's something we'll talk a lot, a little bit more about, and something that we can kind of keep an ongoing conversation as, as we move into our retreat season and then longer-term into budget and other seasons as well. So I want to start off by, I'm going to walk you through kind of each of our outcomes and some of our highlights and some of the things we may have planned. So trustworthiness and transparency. You know, last year, we did kind of one of our first major, you know, aldermanic engagement events. We're building on that this year with a farmer's market event on June 14th. Probably going to have another event potentially as well over the summer, trying to get you to engage with your constituents, meet with them where they're at, and try to, you know, humanize city government, you know? That's one of the things that, you know, we tried to do as part of the plan. We've also got alder, engagement events between our Police, Fire, and Public Works Departments. We had this past weekend, a dedication ceremony for one of our engines and ambulance. We had, you know, Walk the River with, Walk the River, Walk with River. We've got Touch a Truck coming up. So we've got a number of these events, and we've been trying to kind of up our game a little bit on those. Since the last update, we added Ask Wilson, our AI chatbot, to our website that hopefully provides better answers and easier access to our city web government. We're also working on a wholesale website upgrade and new platform as part of this year, so that's something that, trying to improve the resident experience, to get access to the information they need in a timely fashion, using the data on our website, where people are clicking, where they're accessing, to try to make that as a positive experience as possible. If you haven't looked at it, police have published their 2024 annual report, and it's really filled with a lot of good stories, a lot of data, major cases, and it really does a fantastic job of showing all the great work that our police department does, and how professional they are at the job they do. So that's something that, we're proud to post our data and share kind of how we're doing and how things have moved and changed because of, you know, what it shows about the professionalism that we know we have within our police department. Vibrant and diverse community, so obviously, this past meeting, you approved a contract for the Peace Bridge Ramp. That was a strategic plan item. That's something that we know the community and many of you are very excited about. It's something that, you know, had been talked about for many years, and, you know, by putting in a plan, making a commitment to do it, we've been able to make that happen and move forward. We'll add public artwork, public restrooms, and really continuing to invest in the core of our downtown. Previewing, expect some things coming your way. Expect that soon. And we're also preparing for additional RFPs later this year to market some of our additional city properties, building on some of the investments we've made in some of these areas as well. Environmental leadership and sustainability. I want to talk about the fact that we've done a lot of document digitization, and I know it's not necessarily sexy, but it's a lot of work that is going to clear out quite literally rooms full of paper that allow us to digitize processes, move things forward, and help free up some space that, like we kind of discussed earlier, we, we might need a little more of in some ways. So that's where all police records, we're working on digitizing those, basically going back, you know, decades of case reports, as well as all of our files within community development. We're working on getting those all scanned in. If you haven't been online in Laserfish recently, you should be able to find nearly almost every ordinance and resolution, agreements, minutes, et cetera. We're almost done with that project to get basically all of our vital records scanned. So that is using Laserfish, using workflows, templates, and other things like that. As you know, we're well underway on our electric utility study. That was an item that was in the strategic plan as well. A survey is going to be sent out to all ratepayers, and I share that around with you, and if you, I've made some updates, so if you have any feedback, please do let me know, but we'll be getting that out pretty soon. I want to call attention to Recycle Coach. This was something that ties to our goal of waste reduction programs. It's an IEPA-funded tool that is local to our context, so our waste department, or our PPS department, who manages our waste hauling contract, looked through, made sure the information in there is updated. So if you have a question of how do I dispose of this specific item? Do I want to get reminders of when I'm supposed to put this out? How I'm supposed to separate different things? Download the Recycle Coach app, say you're in the city of Batavia, and you can find local context information about your waste hauling, and if you have any questions, that's a great place to check out. I think we also have a widget on our website. If you look at Recycle Coach, you should find some information on there. One of our other strategic planning items was a Parkway Tree expansion. One of the things you chose to use, single-bag fee for, or the single-use bag fee for, was to subsidize the Parkway Tree program. We saw fantastic uptake, fantastic uptake, and a lot of people were able to put them in at a significantly lower cost. So that was a way you chose to use some funding to offset it and obtain a strategic priority. One of the other things that, and I'll mention this because Eric mentioned it during staff today, but we've added a number of hybrid vehicles, and our police officers really like driving them, apparently, the hybrid vehicles. And if you know how they talk about our current fleet of cars, this is like, we are ready to jump for joy because the Ford Explorers have great transmissions. Right, Eric? You don't need-
With the hybrid powertrain or with that hybrid one is very good.
Yes, they're very happy with them, so, and I know I've mentioned this before, but our community development and some of our IT vehicles, they're essentially operating nearly 100% of the time on electric power, just driving around town. We do take them out for road trips, not real road trips, but to get stuff moving through the engines, to make sure they're going well. But we're almost exclusively using electric power, which is, you know, really a good thing, that provides us the flexibility we need with some of our city vehicles, but nonetheless, for our local uses, kind of serves most of those purposes. So thank you for continuing to support those, and those have been a really good trial that we're probably going to continue to invest in going forward. Safety and well-being. I want to talk about the fact that we've done some, two tabletop exercises so far under the strategic planning kind of framework, and that we have these kind of scheduled every six months. This is something that our staff take extremely seriously, planning for, God forbid, the worst days in the city history of what would happen, what could happen, how we're preparing. You know, part of the other thing is, we manage a significant number of utilities that a lot of communities don't handle. So we have to prepare for emergencies from an electric standpoint, a water standpoint, a wastewater standpoint, a police, a fire, a community development standpoint. So there's really all these components that tie into tabletop exercises, and one of the things that's come out of this is, is we've really worked and improved our relationship with the Kane County Office of Emergency Management. We're doing community education events, we're preparing go-bags and some things to help staff be more prepared to be able to serve you all in emergencies. So these are some of the things that, by putting things in a strategic plan, we've been able to improve that relationship, First Name Basies over there, and, you know, we get commendations from Kane County and from others that say, thank you for putting in the effort and time to do this, that when we have an entire day dedicated to doing tabletop exercises, where we talk about our emergency preparedness, talk about what's going well, what's not going well, so that we can keep the 26,000 people of this town safe, those are, it takes a lot of time, but it's something that's nonetheless really important. One of the other things we committed to doing was holding mental health trainings, so staff, supervisors, and others can be recognizing the symptoms of mental illness, as well as how to, how to cope, how to handle things, and how to handle this world we live in. It really helps staff just improve what they know and really be aware of their neighbors, their friends, their colleagues, recognizing the signs that someone may be struggling, and making sure that, you know, we look out for each other, not just as staff, but, you know, as one another. Other things that were included in the, in the budget are transportation safety programs. So we've been working with Speedway, Batavia Apartments, and some others over at Kirk and Wilson to try to improve that intersection. We've got some, I'll mention a little bit later, but some pedestrian counting devices that we're working on putting over there. And then we're also, I know Lori's still looking for people, but we're trying to do a video series with some of the high school about, you know, close calls or close incidents perhaps people may have had, and trying to do some safe transportation safety campaigns. So if you're, if you know any high school students, please share that amongst your circles and make sure to have them contact Lori about that. Staff have also been participating in the Kane County Safe Streets for All Steering Committee, and that has allowed us to kind of, in some ways, be a squeaky wheel for improvements in our area. We have our final meeting tomorrow that hopefully finalizes some of the recommended improvements in that long term, is a way to get federal funding through the Safe Streets for All program. So hopefully, that leads to some improvements that are tied- So hopefully that leads to some improvements that are tied specifically to what the steering committee worked on, but that's something that, um, ties into some of our strategic planning goals. And then it's obviously not a fun topic, but it's something that we, we have to do and it's important and that I know that our fire and police departments take exceptionally seriously is joint active shooter training. It's not just the police department, it's not just the fire department, it's teams working together. Like I said, God forbid anything would ever happen, um, they're preparing for those worst days. Um, I want to talk about some of the effective governments and service delivery. So, um, we are continuing to make progress on getting all these online permits up. I do want to be honest that this is something that has been delayed. It was something that we had put a position in the budget for an IT staffer to help grow some of our applications and to improve these connections. That was not something that was in the budget. So we're still trying to make as much progress on, as we can on this and we're continuing to make good progress. But that's something that I, I do want to mention would likely be a little further along had a position been added. We're finalizing a mobile friendly technology standard so that anything we're adding going forward is able to be accessible from the public side, from the phone. We know a lot of people tend to do a lot of business and a lot of things from one's cell phone. So the more that we can have technology that meets that standard, um, the more we're able to provide a, a better experience for our residents. We have updated nearly, if not all of them up to date. Our public work staff have field maps on smartphones. This has been helpful both in routine issues like identifying a location of something, knowing the routing of a stormwater network, but also in emergencies, you know, if we have something that goes down the drain during a, you know, a fire department crash or something, being able to know where we can cap things off, where this conveyance system goes. By having those in the field, it's really improved some of our emergency responses. And we have had, excuse me, actual people say like, hey, I was able to use this, this helped me in an emergency. We've rolled out Paycom and that's designed to kind of improve our onboarding experience. So now that we actually have staff that are applying via the Paycom portal, onboarding via the Paycom portal, it's kind of keeping them in one system throughout the entire process. So there's a level of consistency and familiarity that they have with the system that also allows us to build in trainings and other workflows as well. Another thing, I know that some of you have asked about it as well, we are keeping an eye out on AI tools. We've, you know, talked to you before about, and it was in the budget for some licenses for Microsoft Copilot AI. Well, it's obviously available for people outside of government. Our Microsoft accounts are tied to specific government cloud versions. They have additional security and all that. And, uh, Microsoft said it would be available in, uh, August of 2024. So that is, I believe, our most current update. So we're still keeping an eye on that, but know that, um, it's something we are very, very eager about, um, and to adopt. Another thing is some of the things that we're looking ahead on is how we can continue to integrate AI in a responsible and safe manner. So as part of our upcoming, you know, body worn and squad camera, it's something we're kind of looking into, we'll, we'll have more for that. But just, it's something that's continuing to permeate more and more activities of a city, um, and something we're going to be putting policies and safeguards in place as well.
Something I wanted to chime in on, on that last one was about Paycom. And another advantage has been the efficiency that it has created. Paycom came in selling themselves as saying 95% of your employees will be able to complete their payroll without having any in, uh, contacts with your HR department. And that, before having Paycom, that was not the case. Wendy got the statistics from Paycom and they said, your most recent payroll, 99% of people were able to complete their payroll without any, having to make any contacts with HR or HR having to make any changes there. So real is very efficient.
Economic, economic development, local business support. We've obviously approved the downtown plan and now comes the fun part of implementing it. That is a, a large task that our planning and zoning team have, uh, been doing a very good job on. They've created an internal clear plans to help them track it. And so one of the things we're doing now is updating a lot of the zoning codes and, and things like that to actually be implementing the plan. I know they've been meeting with property owners and others to, again, continue that implement, in implementation. Since our last update, um, you know, one of the items was to kind of centralize parking and get parking in downtown as dense as possible to free up development space and, and, you know, ultimately not have as many parking lots as we do. And so that becomes developed. One of the things is we partnered with a library and this is something that we've mentioned, um, to other cities and it's like, yeah, the library's not using their parking lots on weekends or nights. So that's an opportunity for us to provide additional parking without adding more parking spots really in the downtown. So that's something that, um, ties into our strategic plan as well. Downtown public restrooms, um, you approved a landscape architect contract and that is something that is moving forward to go, um, where the tin shop is. Um, and then the local sourcing prioritization policy, basically when we can, we try to buy things locally, um, trying to give local businesses some business, um, and keep that, that cycle going. Community engagement and inclusion. A couple of weeks ago, we had our annual employee breakfast. We recognized quite literally hundreds, if not thousands of years of, hundreds, I knew the number somewhere, um, but hundreds of years of, of combined staff experience, um, in that room. And that's just a testament to, um, all the staff we have and their years and years of combined knowledge. One of the things we're working on is a new agenda management system. If you're familiar with Board Docs, we're rolling out something similar. Um, so as part of that, we're going to be, um, including our equity and climate impact considerations as part of that. That was, uh, that was last week, I think, two weeks ago, maybe. And then we also, I wanted to provide an update. One of the items was to consider, you know, potentially providing childcare at city council meetings. That's something I did look into that ultimately, um, some of the cities that started it, it ultimately didn't really go anywhere. So we do want to create a, a family friendly environment for city council meetings, but that was not necessarily a prudent way to do it. We talked to a couple of cities and it just didn't really, didn't really get, uh, super, uh, well uptaken. We continued to, and one of the items was to kind of evaluate safe routes to school. They had made some changes to the program and ultimately we looked into it and we still feel it's a valuable program to be able to add sidewalks and continue your goal of, you know, adding sidewalks throughout the entire city. We received our eco counter devices, which are bike and pedestrian counting tools. We're working on troubleshooting a few things here and there, but those will be deployed soon and, and hopefully in time for the summer season. We're also applying to renew our bronze level status for the bicycle friendly community. Um, we did briefly kind of look at some of the things that would be required for silver and that's a lot of, um, infrastructural changes, addition of miles of bike lanes, um, things that do take a lot of time. So if we were to go for silver, we would not be getting it this time, but it's nonetheless something that, um, we're going to try to strive for. I do want to also touch briefly on some of our fire department strategic plan goals. That's a separate plan, but nonetheless, something that is, you know, very important to us. One of the things that we've been looking into is accreditation and we're just going to break this out as its own outcome. It's really a lot of lifting, um, but it compares ourselves to other communities. It looks at best practices, it formalizes best practices and it's a way to hold yourselves accountable. So we, we're, we're exploring accreditation through a number of our city departments. It's something that a lot of cities are tending to do now because it establishes best practices and allows us to kind of set a externally validated process system of doing things. One of the other items is updating standard operating guidelines, not just, uh, here, but trying to kind of build them across some of our communities so that when we show up as an auto aid or when St. Charles or Geneva show up here, we have an understanding of how each other operates so that we're providing more efficient and safer services to, you know, God forbid those situations happen, we are, um, providing as best services as we can. We've also been working on growing our, and improving our explorers program. Some of our recent staff additions came through that program. And so that has led to some renewed interest in kind of building that up and realizing that it is a valuable viable pipeline for bringing in city staff, um, especially to our fire department. I think our most recent hire did come through the explorers program through the fire department. And then a number of staff have worked on improving our inventorying systems for all of our equipment, our machines, our tools, um, and, and use that to also build in maintenance processes. So it sets checklist, idea or updates, timelines, um, and it's tied to shift, shift schedules. So if someone's on a shift, it assigns them the task and moves forward. I do want to take a moment to kind of discuss some of the challenges. Like I said, we are, we feel in a good place, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that there are some things that are likely to kind of start to slip or not get done as fast as you're likely wanting us to get things done. So part of those are, there were a number of positions in last year's budget that would significantly advance strategic initiatives. There are these sort of utility players we talk about, the people that can pitch in, not only just hop on things that are incoming, but also these things that really take a time to step back, look at an entire process, talk to half of us and staff, multiple departments and improve that process and implement it. So that's something that you're likely to see an ongoing conversation about, um, as we move into next budget season and as we kind of go towards our retreat. Also, not surprising, capital costs have gone up substantially. You know, just between kind of the end of 2020 and beginning of 2024, nearly doubled. Since then, similar increases. So the things we used to be able to build for an X amount of dollars, in some ways, it's nearly doubled. So that places pressures on city finances to be able to do the same number and same quality of projects that you expect, ultimately with likely the same amount of money in most cases. We also have exceptionally high building demand, um, and that has not slowed down and we really haven't had a break. And, you know, adding hundreds of single family homes, townhomes, buildings, um, in our commercial and industrial districts. Like I said, it's about taking that step back and when we're trying to process and get things out the door and get things approved so that we can have these buildings go up, some of that, you know, comes at the expense of being able to take time, pause, look at a process, improve a process while also still keeping everything running on time. So what does all of that mean? We're going to be taking a, a much earlier look at this year's budget process. We're going to start this probably in June and July, um, so that as we go into our retreat timeline, we're able to start these conversations much earlier. We're able to have much more informed and long-term conversations about our budget and long-term finances. So I say this as a, this is going to be an ongoing conversation, but that, you know, take a look at the strategic plan, see where we're at. Are you happy with where we're at? And if so, great. But it, it's something that we kind of want to bring up and have a discussion about, you know, when we brought forward the strategic plan, I, I was quite honest, I'd say, we can get as far as the gas tank is going to get us. And so that's something that I just want to keep you all apprised on. I don't want that to be discouraging. We're making really good progress and we have a lot of good things to show for it, but that there are some things that are going to become increasingly challenging to get done on top of day-to-day responsibilities that continue to grow and, and take time for staff. So, um, I, I thank you all for the continued support that you've provided and being able to do what we've done so far. And there's projects and initiatives and things to show for it. And we should all be proud of the work that, um, staff as well as you all have been able to do, um, really in, quite honestly, just over a year and a, and a couple of months. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to talk further and this, all this information as well as the entire strategic plan is available on our website. You can dive in and staff provide regular updates in there. So you can see kind of if you have a specific interest or niche topic that you want to look into, all of that's on our website and I'm happy to always talk to you about our strategic plan and where different items are at.
I will say, one of the things that I learned a long time ago on previous boards that I was on was plans made nothing unless you reviewed them and went back and held yourself to some type of metric as you went through that plan. And so I think it's really important that we take seriously the updates that we get, the input that we get to have on it and, you know, watching those plans develop what works, what doesn't work and where we think we have to, you know, add extra time or add extra dollars to get something, you know, achieved that we thought was the right thing and sometimes realizing that maybe everything wasn't what we really wanted and move on from that. So I, I think it's really important that we have these updates and that, you know, we talk about this stuff because it is, again, so very important to actually achieve something with the plan, not just have the plan. Because that was something that earlier on, other organizations I worked with was, it was really frustrating when we're talking about starting another planning cycle, but we haven't gone through the plan we already developed and said, okay, we got 10 out of the 12 things done, you know, now we can move on to the next version of it. So I think it's really good that we do have these updates and we do see the progress and see where we have added staff or added money to, to make things happen and, you know, where it's been a struggle, where it's been really good and, you know, the outcomes that we see from those things, I think are really good and concrete things that we can talk about, that we've actually achieved stuff that, you know, we just didn't have a plan that sat on a shelf down at City Hall for somebody to look at. Again, I think it's a credit to everybody that's up here, that's been up here and that will be up here, that that's the way we need to treat this. And each one of our departments, I really believe, especially from the top down in the departments, feels that way as well. They want to have a plan that they can use to have a good job, to have a good career, to have a great place to live. And if we keep doing this and doing it the way I think we're doing it well enough, you know, that's how this will work. So I'm pretty proud of it. So, thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to recognize Max's role in this strategic plan. He really leads us in, uh, making sure that, as you say, it isn't a plan that sits on a, on a shelf. It is something that we think about in the work that we do every single day and Max's job is very huge in coordinating those efforts across an organization. So you're doing a great job with the plan. Thank you, Max.
Thank you. Okay. Item 14, which is Resolution 202565R, authorizing execution of agreement with S20 Design and Engineering for Feasibility Investigation and Conceptual Design Services for an amount not to exceed $24,700.
Yes, in the meeting on March 25th, we were considering a proposal for a feasibility study. And as a result of the discussion, it was decided that really we'd like to take a step back and, uh, come up with a conceptual design for a whitewater course that, um, everybody felt like they could get behind before we go into the feasibility stage. And then a third part of the process then will be doing a economic impact analysis. And I went back to the, uh, company that I had contacted previously, recommended by Alderman Ure, um, and asked them to provide us with a, uh, proposal to, uh, do that work, the conceptual design. And in fact, they came back with a proposal that contained the first two steps. So both, um, working on conceptual design services as well as the feasibility study. What we had budgeted in the 2025, uh, in 2025 for the feasibility study was $20,000. S2O's combined, uh, fees for both the conceptual design services and the feasibility study come out at just under $25,000. And they estimate that it would take approximately 90 days. Following our discussion on March 25th, um, the executive director of the Park District asked if city council would consider, um, pausing for two months while they consider collaborating with us on all three of these, um, different studies. And, uh, given the fact that they own the resource of the, the Depot Pond, which is deeply affected by what, uh, we develop as a concept for what will replace the dam that the city owns, um, it might make sense. And then also if we're collaborating on the pro, project, wondering if there might be an opportunity in sharing the costs of these, uh, studies as well. And so today I'm asking for direction on how the committee would like to proceed. Would you like to provide the pause that is being requested by the Park District or recommend approval by city council of the resolution before you authorizing execution of the agreement to move forward immediately with the project? Or if you'd like to seek other competing proposals for the studies?
Public comments. One, the, the quote is actually 16,500, but I'm assuming it's because you also wanted them to, um, because you said it's just under 25,000, but it's $5,200 for like a workshop and then to do other, um, uh, concept designs would be $3,000 each. So where is the 24,007? How does that math?
I added in one more community engagement and I was thinking if they wanted to do a community engagement with, uh, the Park District to seek their input on the proposal. So I think that's a $5,200 item. And then they also recommended at the end, when they were going through those costs, that they anticipated that, um, if, in the event that we want an additional concept. So two concepts are included in the base price. A third concept would be an additional, uh, $3,000, I believe. So that's where the 24,000 number came up.
Just wanted to, just wanted to do math on that. So then, so my comment on, what I, what I like about this one, it's one, it's less than V3. They know whitewater design, so they understand that. They do river restoration, too. Their brochure shows whitewater design. But they, having the ability to have these other concepts, too, can give everybody a visualization of what all three, we'll just say all three options, is really three options. Put the river back to the way God made it, put in a whitewater park, or put in a berm. I think those are the three design concepts, concepts that you're speaking of, but I'm not sure when you say that.
No, I was thinking, because I think that what the direction was in the last meeting was to design a whitewater kayaking course and to come up with design. So that would be three different, they would come up with three different whitewater course.
Okay, so that's what you mean by that. Okay. Because I wouldn't be opposed of being like, hey, draw it out, what you, based on, you know, there's a 2002 study out there. They know how the river is from that, you know, what the river is generally going to do. And they could draw it and be like, well, this is, what would it look like if you tried to berm it and do that? I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I think that, as I said last time, we need to, in order to make an informed decision, you need to have some data for that informed decision. And right now, everything that we've been talking about has been conceptual with, hey, we think it costs about this much, but nobody's said anything. And so we're making decisions saying, thinking it's going to cost two, three times as much as it would to berm it up. And, but we don't really know that for certain. So this gives that information. And I think that, again, in this continuous waiting game for the, if we wait for the Park District, we're just waiting again. And then if they say, never mind, well, then now you're, or they say, yes, we will do it. Okay, well, you've lost two months or more of time with that. If you, we want to be prepared for if and when there is money available that it's easier to move on, rather than, oh, okay, we're starting from scratch. Because every time we talk about this, we're starting from scratch because we have nothing. So falls within budget, I would, or really close to budget, you don't have to do the extra drawing, and then it falls within budget. So I would recommend that we move forward and it gives everybody an idea of what we're trying to do here.
When would the economic study then occur after this has been designed?
Yes.
Okay. And that would be a separate con.
Yes, likely by a completely different firm. Just a little bit of a conflict of interest there.
What's the risk in deciding to go ahead with this now instead of waiting the two months for the Park District? Is it just the financial aspect?
No, I think there's a political aspect to it as well, where we collaborated together on the master plan for the Batavia Corridor of the Fox River. And now the city is then deciding to just set off on its own path of designing the whitewater course and leaving the Park District out of the discussion. Even if we decided to go in that direction, I would recommend that we pay for the extra engagement session specifically with the Park District Board.
I think it's really important to have the Park District alongside of us when we do this, because of the fact, we are not going to own, or I don't believe that the city should own a whitewater rafting park or whitewater kayaking park in the river, just like I don't believe we should own the pond behind us when the Park District programs most everything around it. I would believe that the Park District, and this is my thought from all the discussions we've had in the past, they want to have control of that. And to step in and try to just hand that off to them without them being involved at this stage, even in simple designs for this, I think might be problematic, especially with a new board. I mean, I had a direct discussion with the director from the Park District last week, and she really would like us to wait on this.
I had a similar discussion. She made the same comment to me. It was a very strong request, as opposed to just, gee whiz, guys, why don't you wait around? You know, I mean, it was a strong request. And I have another question, though. In terms of determining whether, or waiting and worrying if money's going to be available, my understanding, if that comment is going towards money being available for removal of the dam, it's not going to matter anyway.
Right. So the only, Concept A, building the berm, was the only thing that we would be able to put into the river that would make us eligible for money for removing the dam. If we put something in on the riverside, we would not be eligible.
I think that's a non-factor, if that's what the study is going to look for. I mean...
I completely agree with what you were saying, Ellen. And I, my question was, what do we envision long-term? What would our involvement with the Park District, or what would their responsibility, if we, what would that be? Pretty heavily, I mean, it sounds like we expect that they would be mostly responsible.
Exactly.
Very heavily responsible. So it really does not seem to be getting what is a very long-term proposition off on the right foot to.
We would not be insuring that either. I'm going to tell you, my liability.
That's what my other question was, is what is the liability risk there? That's the increase. And what's the cost of that? And is that the city, the park, you know?
Absolutely not of the city.
So what I would say on that is, I would anticipate that due to the Park District's limitations in issuing debt, that in all likelihood, they would probably look toward the city at being able to build whatever it is. However, the quid pro quo there, I think, is that then if the Park District would be willing to take ownership and perpetual maintenance and ensuring that as a Park District amenity, not a city amenity.
I kind of view this actually a little bit different politically, that we're doing the Park District a huge favor by saying, we've budgeted this, and we want to move ahead with this feasibility study on something that we both already have agreed on. We've all agreed to pursue Plan B until it doesn't make sense to pursue it, at least to get some more information. That, we've already had that discussion with the Park District and have agreed with them on that. So in my mind, we're actually continuing to help them out by saying, okay, we have the money, we're going to do this, we're going to move ahead with this, so you guys don't have to. Like, we're not asking them to do the feasibility study.
Except we are, we are scrapping Concept B and designing a different whitewater course. So I think that that's the part where they wanted to participate in that.
There was ever any design of the whitewater course at any point. It was just an idea.
On March 25th, I was told, we are not moving forward with Concept B. And that is why we are not ready to do a feasibility study. And instead, we want to take a step back and hire someone to do concept designs. Because Mark said that he heard from Chris that this is just a bunch of four sets of rocks thrown from bank to bank, and that's not what we want at all.
That's what I'd said in 2023, is that is not, what Hitchcock drew out made it crystal clear back then, that's not the design. That is them drawing something. And so Concept B was a whitewater park. And to ignore the rudimentary drawing, because none of their drawings were, they were all rudimentary of what that design looks like. None of them, it was just like, it was, it was like the one Washington block of cheese, in my opinion. That it was, there was yellow block that everybody's like, what the heck is that? And what they drew out, and I'd said that multiple times back then, that's not what a whitewater park was. And we all know that, that that's not what a whitewater park is. So.
Well, the same was with Concept A, when we asked very direct questions to Hitchcock about Concept A, they didn't have answers because they were like, whoa, we haven't engineered this. So it's the same with B. There was no, and there was no plan. It was just like, here's an idea. And so now we're just asking for the feasibility study and for some conceptual ideas to know, can we, should we even consider moving forward with this or not? And we, until we have that information, we're just continuing to spiral in these conversations. And that's all we're asking for, is information to move us to the next step of conversation. I don't feel like we are at all trying to remove anything from the Park District, even by getting these plans. In fact, it'll just help us bring some very specific ideas to them in two, three months when they have their board intact. If this takes 90 days, then perfect, we'll have an, this will be done, they'll have their board intact, we can bring these ideas. And then at that point, it might just be like, this doesn't work for anybody. And then we get to come back and discuss a different plan.
I think that if we are moving from what was originally agreed upon by all the boards of B, and really coming up with some concepts and introducing those, that we do need to have the Park Board on board with us, especially if we're going to be having them, you know, looking at them to finance or be responsible for this. For us to come up with a plan without them being our partner, to decide as far as having these drawings done, I don't, I don't think that's the right thing to go. I look at our neighbors north of us who have put their project on hold because there is a new board coming in. And I think it, I think that, you know, it's okay to follow that suit. We don't have to move forward just because we have the money. If we're doing this as a, as a team, we've got to do it, do every part of it as a team and have them on board.
I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, though.
Hold on a second. Dustin's next.
Right. I was going to say, I think there needs to be some clarity here. How does the whitewater design proposal conflict with Concept B? Because from what I, from what I knew, Concept B was really just the stepped rock weirs replacing the existing dam.
Right.
And a whitewater park was basically just a fancy version of stepped rock weirs.
It's a variation of that, yeah.
So actually, you know, if you look at Yorkville, Yorkville is not a series of four stepped-down dams. It is a meandered course. It has two chutes that you can go through, one which is, you know, of the lower skill, and then another one that you can go through that's much faster and more dangerous way to go through. It is more like outcroppings of rock here and there versus stepped-down dams.
But those still function as impoundments, right?
They all function as impoundments, but if, I mean, to me, when you look at step, at Concept B, it's four stepped-down dams. I think when you look at whitewater courses across the United States, there are 100 variations of what that can ultimately look like, not Concept B.
Okay. I'd still argue that spiritually, it's the same concept, but it's hugely desired result because Concept B was always advertised as also acting as a recreational amenity. So this is just, to my mind, creating a more concrete version of that as we go into the design phase, as Mark has been suggesting. So I think it's, I would say it's overstating to say it's throwing out Concept B. This is just an involvement of that, for which I would agree, the Park District should have some involvement in because they will ultimately be dealing with programming around it. But I think it's still what we've been, what's been argued for this entire time, in my, in my experience, and that the major implications of the project are still largely the same.
If it was, I'm surprised that we couldn't just move to that feasibility stage if it's pretty much the same concept as we've been talking about. But instead, we wanted to go back. And I'm okay with that. But I think we may end up with something that looks very different than, than Concept B.
You want to comment now, Tim?
Well, most of what, of what Alderman Peaper said just, you know, echoed a lot. I was just getting confused because I thought, much to what Alderman Ure said, that it was more of just these, this is, you know, that Hitchcock stuff was really 30,000-foot view. And we're trying to bring it down to like 10,000-foot view and say, okay, we want to go down the B route. Now, what are the options in the B route? You know, that, what does this look like in reality? Okay. Yes, the stepped-down weir was the idea in putting in the rocks and, you know, a different idea that kind of gives it a little more recreational capabilities, along with, and I think what we were all excited about was all the amenities that were potential from, which is why we really needed the Park District as well, to be on board with any of those amenities along the sides of the river. I forget what all those little, the things you can lay on that, you know, hang over, super cool, all that really cool stuff. That's where I thought the Park District came in. I was kind of like with Lee on this one. I'm kind of scratching my head going, wait a minute, I thought we're just moving the ball forward to then bring to the Park District and everybody, hey, here's what we've now done. Here's, here's a more refined approach. Now what? You know? And, and does this make sense at all? You know, we're all, I think, hoping it does. But I think we all have an inclination in today's world, maybe it might not be. But, you know, I was kind of, I'm glad we cleared that up. Because, yeah, I was getting confused, too, on, you know, and it's been a while now. So I'd racked the brain on what exactly Concept B was. But, you know, after looking at it, I see your point, too, as well, Laura, in terms of, I mean, it looks like a stepped-down weir with, you know. But I think the other part of that is, they just, that's just what Hitchcock decided. They could have also put a whitewater park picture in there. It just, you know.
The options were, I mean, everybody wants to talk about what the public voted for. The options are what was presented by Hitchcock.
Right, at a highly conceptual level. So we need to drill down now on any of them.
Yeah, I mean, to echo that, I'm looking back at my notes, I don't think we, we as a board at all said abandon Option B. That is not what my takeaway was. And so I'm shocked, right? Right now, I'm speaking from a place of shock. My assessment of this proposal is exactly as Alderman Lancy stated, is to dive down a little deeper. There was nothing in Concept B that I read, I wasn't part of those discussions, that said it had to be four, or that it had to be oriented in the way it was oriented, or anything like that. Specifically, as is in the memo today, it just stated, you know, a series of stepped-down dams navigable by kayaks. I mean, that's pretty broad. And I was hoping that from these studies, we can get a sense, what does that mean? What does stepped-down mean? Having actually done this work, that's, it can be a whitewater park, right? That's pretty easy to do. You put the rocks here instead of there, and you can navigate it. We're not really talking about the Cacheal Pewter River here. We're not talking about Cherry Creek or South Platte, right? Where you're going to have high-volume, narrow channel. We're talking wide lazy. So we need to know what that looks like verse something else. So that's a long-winded way of saying, first off, I don't believe that we abandoned Plan B. And so that's, I don't know. I think we need to sort of formally say that, rather than sort of have a feeling on that. The second thing, though, is I'm really excited to see the inclusion of some outreach here. I like the addition of the $5,000, whatever dollars it was, to sit down and have both a public and council input on exactly what we're looking for. I'm on the fence on whether we wait for the Park District or not. I think that that political risk goes both ways. Just as their patience may be tried, ours is also being tried, right? We're waiting around, we've been waiting for a long time. Okay, that's a wash. But if we can get a professional to sit down here and get us all on the same page, tell us what it should look like, you know, here are the pros and cons, and given your budget, here's a realistic thing, you know, maybe we want some fancy stuff, but you can't afford it. That's really helpful. And that kind of work really helps build something that's both going to fit budget, fit scope, and give us, do we want some bumps you go down, or do we want something you have to actually turn to get around? So for me, that's the most important part of this proposal. That was certainly lacking from the other visions and paths forward that we've taken a look at.
I want to certainly go on record here as encouraging this council to follow the recommendations of the staff, as has been outlined by Laura. And I say that because in other conversations I'm having in other towns, as all of you know about, I don't know, two, three years ago, the state of Illinois came in with the announcement they were going to take all the dams out of the river. And then about a year ago, or whenever it was, they came back and said, well, we're rethinking that. And they had started up in Algonquin, and so they took that dam out. And that was the only dam that got taken out and really replaced. And so now what's happened is, truth be told, the state of Illinois is probably, for lack of a better description, flat ass broke. They don't have any money to be doing anything. And what they're now being faced with is, you can turn on the TV any night and read about how the RTA is in here looking for $570 million to keep the system going the way it is. Or you can turn on and watch the conversations about the Chicago White Sox wanting to build a multi, multi, multi-million dollar stadium. And the only way it gets built is with the help of the state of Illinois. And you can listen to the mayor of Chicago go on about all these people he's got in town that he that he needs state support to keep them in shape. So anybody sitting here thinking that the state of Illinois is gonna run in here in the next couple of years and throw a bunch of money on any project, I think is just nonsense. And so I would encourage us to continue to do the right thing. I think we're on the right track, we know what we want to do. Alderman Ure's, his time here is, is put forth some good ideas that I think we should kind of follow up on, but I gotta tell you, I am not optimistic that this is something that we're gonna see happen in the next couple of years. The word out in the political field is, is that everybody just better sit back and wait for November of 2026 to happen, and we see what the poll will say then, and that's one of the decisions that will be made. The president will still be in office for two more years, and that's another whole wrinkle in this whole thing, that there is no money out there, any place, to do this. And unless the city of Batavia is thinking we're gonna go out and put a referendum on the ballot and ask the property taxpayers to pay for it, which I don't think has a snowball's chance in hell of passing, there's no money in any budget right now to do this. So I think we got the time here to do it the right way. We pick up on some of Alderman Ure's ideas and others that are talking, and we kind of fine-tune them, we look and see how they can be put into place, and we maybe shoot a goal that five years from now, we'll be able to be in a position that maybe we can do something. But we're just wishful thinking if we're sitting here, we're gonna get some money from somebody to do something.
I would vote in favor of progress, and I don't want to go this alone without the Park District, but as others have stated, this really seems to be just much more of an information gathering kind of endeavor, finding out, it's feasibility, so is it feasible? Is this something that is actually going to work? Is it possible? I think that we would enter into these conversations armed with more information, and it's been so long that these conversations have been happening, we sat here for four hours with the Park District years ago, talking about this, came to these decisions, and I was under the impression it was more just kind of a theoretical drawing, as was everything there, because we didn't have, you know, there was no details then. So I'm definitely in favor of going forward and getting some information that we can then move forward with.
Earlier, a couple hours ago now, in this meeting, there was people that were so concerned about spending money on actually doing a study on town infrastructure to keep the town up and running in terms like public works, fire stations, and now some of the same people who are voicing those concerns want to spend money on a feasibility study on a whitewater park. Makes no sense to me. So I don't see why we don't wait for the Park District, at least, the very least, and see if they're gonna maybe pay some of the money as well. And I can't see why there'd be any objection if there was so many concerns about spending money on actual studies for city infrastructure to keep the place up and running. So I mean, and, you know, my other thought would be, you know, these fees, if the feasibility studies come back and they're not exactly what people want them to be, are we gonna be able to move on and see if there's something more feasible?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, in response to the mayor, the only thing that scares me more than having no money available is if that dam fails. And that's what I, you know, and I know it's not gonna, well, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. Well, right, it's failed, but even worse, to the point where we're held liable for certain things and whatever. So, I mean, I hear all sides of this story, and I, and I agree. Chris, I mean, I see where you're coming from, but two totally different things, totally different. Our staff lives and breathes all the things that we're talking about on, on that side of the equation, and they have a much better idea than building a whitewater park. So it's, I don't even equate the two, it's apples and oranges, but, yeah, I, I, we gotta move the, the needle somewhere, and that's where I think we're at right now.
Do we know when the Park District, their strategic master plan is supposed to be completed?
I don't.
Okay.
Because that might help us, I know, because they're waiting on that, and then their, their board, when did they say that that would be failed?
The board, I think, gets seated in May, and then they have their election, who will be the board president.
In May? Same as us?
The first meeting in May. And so then they just wanted to have one more meeting for them to be, you know, have a, have a business meeting after they've been seated, so that's why they asked for the two months.
They only meet once a month?
Yes.
Got it. If, if we had a date in mind, like by, you know, that first week in July, we're moving forward with this plan. And if we could present that to the Park District, you know, we're excited to continue this process, and we really just want to, for, for both of us, and for, just to keep this conversation rolling, but we really respect your request, but, you know, by that first week in July, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with this. I, I would be okay with that, waiting a couple more months, but with a deadline.
Could I put it on the first cowl in July, so that then the approval is the city council, the second city council meeting in July?
I'm okay with that.
Just for a point of clarification, is it that the Park District wants to weigh in on the existence of this entire study? Or is it that they want to weigh in on the design process?
It's whether they want to collaborate with us on the project. So they, I think that together, they want to jointly put input into the process of the development of the conceptual designs, and then also, you know, participate with us in the feasibility study and the economic impact studies.
Because a study is like a three-month-long study, it, would it make sense to, because then it'll take a few weeks for us to actually get everything squared away before it starts, would it make sense to start the study now? They would start with feasibility, which is really just gonna be, can we get the permitting? Is there like some clear roadblocks? It sounds like the actual conceptual design layout part probably won't start until month two. Hey, that's about when Park District's comfortable weighing in. Do we need to like create a full two-month delay, or can it just be a few weeks, to the point where we could approve it now and just start, shift the timeline of the schedule a bit?
So I, my impression from our last meeting, when we proposed a feasibility study, was that we're not ready for that part yet. We need refinement of a concept for a whitewater course, and so that has to come first. So that's why I think waiting until that then is necessary, so that the concept is developed that we then conduct the feasibility study about.
I have a question. So are we saying if we move forward with the design, we're just going to ask this company without providing any input to come up with three ideas? Or is it they're gonna come in and we're going to say, hey, these are some of the things that we're looking for in this whitewater park?
They're gonna conduct, what they proposed initially was doing one community meeting to provide them input, and one specific city council meeting to provide them input into the process. And then what I added in was, I was, you know, even if we don't partner with the Park District on this project, that we would at least have a session with them.
So the design does involve input from us, and also, as we're partnering with the Park District, that is where it's going to be important for them to contribute their input to this project too. Hence why we shouldn't move forward with this until the request of the Park District Board is on board to provide their input.
I guess I'll say, I'd like to see this have a chance to success, and I think by doing that with the Park District in the same room as we proceed with it is the right way to do that. If we do it without them and we don't have agreement on something in it, and then it delays it, or it takes it apart, then we don't move it forward. And then what do we do?
Yeah, because I could see if we just moved forward with our recommendations and then presented to the park board, that may really piss them off, and they may be like, we're gonna kill this project anyways, we don't like any of those concepts.
I mean, just to be clear, there is no path forward for this long term without the Park District, correct?
We don't want to manage.
We're gonna go it alone and own a whitewater park?
We're not gonna own a whitewater park.
Or look for a private partner, which to me would make no sense.
It really does not make sense to not have them involved in the input process.
Just to respond to your comment, Alderman Sulfah, the reason I'm against the study for the facilities is because I think it's premature, and there's things that we can, we can know on our own as, as part of that, once Police has moved out. The reason I'm very supportive of this is because it's not just about building a whitewater park, it's about building an amenity in Batavia that will be unique. It's, people, if people want to compare it to Yorkville, Yorkville is difficult to get to for people that want to use that, have that type of experience, it's far away from major municipalities. It takes a long time to get out there, it takes a long time to get there from here, let alone people wanting to come from Chicago, or Naperville, or wherever, that this has the, the ability to create additional revenue for the city. We talked about having revenue issues, there's a tourism aspect of it, and that, this has the capability of doing. Whereas, building a new public works facility is not gonna create any revenue for the city, and that's why I have issues with that. We built a wooner a few years ago, probably hasn't paid for itself yet, millions upon millions of dollars to do that, it hasn't paid for itself yet, but it was built with the concept that this is going to be something that's gonna bring revenue into Batavia, it's gonna revitalize that area, and that's what something like this does. It creates tourism that is unique to the area.
Just sort of a question here, what specifically are we looking for from the Park District? Are we looking for the Park District to say, yes, hire these guys to do this RFP that we got here? Or are we asking them, are we waiting to hear from them on, yes, we're doing Concept B still, as I believe we all still think we are? Or are we abandoning Concept B? What, what happens once this two months has passed that gets us over the hump we're at right now?
Yeah, sort of a response, I just want us to not complicate it. They're our partner in this, and that's how, they have to be, and so much like in a, in a business partnership, it's kind of, you know, there's some things that go unsaid here, that if we do them incorrectly, we pay dividends down the road, right? And, and on the positive side, if we do things positively, they react positively, they have more, you know, oh yeah, we agreed on that, yeah, we're gonna do that with you, rather than, you know what, I remember you guys shoved that down our throats, so we're gonna think about that for a little bit. So I, I meant to say that earlier, I'm 100% on board with making sure the Park District's involved. I just thought, right now, we're so conceptual that, yes, of course, let's get input, but like, hey, Park District, we're, we're doing this, please give us your input as this is, train is moving forward.
And I want to say that, I want to be clear, that come two months after their board is, is in and they have got the new president, we will be bringing this to them specifically to move forward with the idea of having the planning meetings, paying for the conceptual designs, like, take this, right? I don't want this to kind of get lost, and we have sort of a misunderstanding on specifically what we're waiting on the Park District for.
And I think it is important to have that, that confidence level when we go into that, because if we get into that meeting and they say, sorry, we're done, we're, we're not going there, we can't do that, we have to concentrate on a rec center, whatever, we need to know that before we start diving any deeper into this, making it any more of what we actually think it's gonna look like. And, you know, one of the things, and one of the reasons I thought that we went with B was with the stepped-down weirs, the way it was set up, was to maintain the pond with that. So, you know, that's another wrinkle in it.
This exploded into a big park.
I'm still not convinced, I don't think it has. I'm still not convinced that there's enough water flow out there to create whitewater.
Well, and I think we're using the term whitewater park incorrectly here, right? Like, we are still talking about stepped-down weirs, we are still talking about.
If you're gonna turn it into an economic generator, it's gonna have to be a whitewater park.
That's not what I'm doing. I'm saying we can do stepped-down weirs in an artistic way, right? So I think we're getting caught up in the phrase stepped-down, I'm sorry, we're getting caught up in the phrase whitewater park, and we're still talking Concept B. So I think we need to start using the language Concept B. What do we want Concept B to look like? Do we want it to look like something fun, or do we want it to be just kind of some ripples? So from my perspective, we are doing Concept B, and that retains the pond, that's a low flow, and, and there's gonna be an amenity component, and that's secondary, but we need to know what that looks like, and that's why this proposal makes sense to me, because they know how to do that.
If our city attorney was here, he could chime in too. I mean, we don't wanna, we don't wanna, I mean, there's liability involved with doing certain things.
Right now, I think we need to get back to what we have in front of us, and that's whether or not somebody would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-65R, or if we'd like to table it and wait to get the Park District in here to move this forward.
Question, can we make an amendment to it with Alderman Lehman's timeline on there?
I think we either wait for the Park District to come in, and then we fast-track it after we got them on board, or we vote on it tonight, so.
Because I think what her proposal was, to bring it back to the first cowl in July, and then final approval at the city council.
Which would literally be the same type of timeframe as what the Park District has asked for.
I say we table it.
You have a motion to table this?
A motion to table this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table Resolution 2025-65R. Roll call, please.
Beraza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peaper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Suron? Vocal singer?
Aye.
Okay. 12, yeah, or I'm sorry.
11.
11, yes, 1, no.
Yeah, that will be tabled. All right, then we will move on to 15, which is project status.
Just a couple of things, the deadline for submission of proposals to relocate the Tin Shop Building at 106 North River Street Pass on April 18th. We received no proposals for relocating the building, and so we just want to ask for concurrence that we are now able to move on to the demolition phase. No objections?
That's what we were planning on.
That's what we're planning on. We're doing fire hydrant flushing on the west side this week, and then we're moving to the east side next week. Off-site electric for the Ashton Ridge subdivision is finishing up this week, but, and then after school is out, will be full reconstructions on the adjacent streets of McKee and Van Nordwick that will necessitate some period of full road closures, but we'll do a lot of public communication in advance of all of those road closures, make sure everyone is well informed. Alderman, Malone?
Yeah, I just have a question, a particular constituent's wondering when they might resod the, the median after that electric work.
You know what, that is probably coming imminently, because it is sod time of year.
Yeah, right now, we're just waiting for some of that material to be available, same thing is happening with Carriage Crest, so I believe as soon as it can be out, it will be, and the temperatures have to be conducive to placing it.
Weeks, maybe.
Yeah.
I'll let that constituent know.
While we're on restoration, there's sections along Water Street that, are those?
Aware of that.
Okay.
Yeah, our wastewater contractor, they did hydroseed, and they have to go out there and fix some of that.
Because I know some of the grade that's out there doesn't really look like hydroseeding or anything's gonna stay there, so I don't know if sod would be an answer to that, because some of the grade, you know, from the street to the sidewalk is pretty severe in that area.
Chris Bong will be walking with Trotter and IHC to punch list that.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight, the police department received retailer educator kits to licensed businesses that sell tobacco products throughout the city. We got these from the Illinois Department of Human Services, Division of Substance Use Prevention and Recovery, and what the kits do is they have educational materials for retailers and their employees to ensure compliance with tobacco sale and distribution laws. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Not for you, I just had another one.
Not for you. I just had another. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Laura? Okay, other? Yeah. Do, uh, do we have any programs for, or like, who should I reach out to or who should I have constituents reach out to if, you know, I get a lot of questions about sidewalks and cracks and lift it up. And I think we've come out and we've put some like yellow tape on them with, uh, you know, which is great, the reflective tape and everything. Um, they're still dangerous. You know, the kids with these scooters these days are flying. My girls have already, you know, bailed a few times, which whatever, live and you learn. Um, but I just didn't know if they're like, if we're kind of actively going about grinding those down or if that's like a, obviously it's probably an ongoing thing.
It is. It's under public works and it's a combination between, it starts in engineering and, um, last year I did run the program. It coincides with the, um, street program. So we're getting that out and approved hopefully by IDOT and then I'll go out to bid. But it's a collective process. We have, um, service requests that come in, engineering goes out and evaluates each sidewalk location. We also do have a webpage that does give the criteria that, um, needs to be met for replacement or grinding for those trip hazards. So if we do notice that it is a trip hazard, we do put that yellow tape on there until we can get the, um, contractor to come out and.
I have noticed they've grinded some of them. Some of them still have the, so I'm, I'll have to look those up on the criteria and stuff, but.
So we can pass that along to those residents and then, um, the grinding contract is handled by our streets division and that is typically like a September timeframe. Um, they come in and take pictures of everything and then they just go, literally go to town and kind of crank whatever was not able to be completed with the street program. And so, um, I think we've taken care of all of our lists that Bill Kellum had. And then, um, our random sidewalks, it's when the residents call in and they can self-report those to engineering.
Okay. Is there any like threshold? Like we wait till we get three complaints a, a street or something? Or is it just you go out every?
Um, if there is a key word, um, when the resident calls, we will go out immediately to look at that. Um, otherwise we will evaluate as we're going. Down in every, um, street that's on the street program gets walked on and we look at any types of criteria. If there are the trip hazards or the sidewalk that has more than four pieces, if they're spalled more than 50%. Um, those are all the sidewalks criterias that we look at as we're walking and looking at all the concrete curb sidewalk.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. One more appearance, people are out there and like you say, the scooter, uh, electric bike crew, like. The bikes are no problem. It's those little scooters.
Yeah, the bikes wipe out too.
They just have to go the opposite way.
Yeah. All right. If there are no others, we have an executive session, um, for collective bargaining and personnel. We need the collective bargaining as well?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a motion. We've got seven minutes. Some of, roll call please.
Barazza.
Nancy.
Here.
Beck.
We're voting to go into.
Motion to go in.
Oh, yes. Hi.
Hi.
She's sitting here. Yeah.
He said wrong.
I'm following. Yeah.
Wolf.
No.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Yure.
Hi.
Vocal singer.